We're live.
Ready to proceed?
Call the meeting to order and if we can. The pledge of. Can you do it, please? Have a call to the roll.
Start the roll call. Chair Clow.
Present on Zoom.
Vice Chair Smith.
Present.
Commissioner McGee.
Present.
Secretary Miranda.
Present.
Commissioner Rieland.
Present.
Commissioner Capon.
Present.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Present.
Commissioner Barber.
Present by Zoom.
We have the ability to proceed. Could I do a motion to approve the agenda? Or not?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor, please say aye. Or do we do it by roll? Call the call.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that included the postponement of the Zorro Blanco case.
I thought that was on the consent agenda, my.
It is not. That is, we are postponing the Zorro Blanco case. From tonight to the August 7th, 2025 meeting.
Do we need to note that in the motion to approve the agenda?
Please.
And.
Motion.
Mr. Chair, there are two case numbers. If you can make sure that they're added in there.
It would be case F and G on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, just G.
So.
As a central, correct.
Your motion to approve the agenda with the understanding that case 2024-9320 will be postponed until the August 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Favor say aye.
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 Now just.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we need a roll.
Person took the vote the other way and another life. All right.
Thank you. I'll start the roll call. Chair Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Secretary Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland.
Yes.
Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds. Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
You can hear a motion to approve consent agenda. Daniel, do we have changes to the consent agenda or as?
As presented.
Your motion?
Motion go, please.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Secretary Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland.
Yes.
Commissioner Capon. Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
Consent agenda is approved. And could I put a motion to approve minutes of the June? And then we can understand if there are any amendments.
Motion to approve the June 5th Planning Commission meeting.
The second, before we call the roll, are there any amendments? And please call the roll.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland.
Yes.
Secretary Miranda.
Stain.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Eric Clow.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
Yeah, and it's are approved. We move to the approval of findings and conclusions of case A 2025-1010094.
Move to approve the approval of findings and conclusions for case 2025-010094. 5211 Los Solaris Drive Development Plan postponed from June 5th, 2025.
There's a second.
In.
Thank you. We mean. Please call the roll.
Attorney Miranda. I mean, sorry, abstained. Thank you. Commissioner McGee.
Stain.
Commissioner Rieland.
Yes.
Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
Mayor here a motion to approve findings and conclusions of case 2024-8027635 Alto Street Development Plan.
There been any adjustments to any of these facts and findings by staff at all from what we see in our packet? Pertaining to any of these cases that we're going through.
Chair, can you elaborate just a little bit more?
Just making sure that anything we're approving right now, if there's been any changes by staff at all from the packet that we've received to right now.
There has not been. Just as an explanation, the findings are nothing more than a snapshot of actions that occurred at the previous meeting. They're not a revote on the meeting. You're not, you know, if you think you, like in some cases, it's been, some commissioners have denied the findings. It's not an approval or a denial. It's more of accepting the snapshot that occurred at the meeting. If there are changes that need to be made because the findings are incorrect, then we can make those changes. But otherwise, it's just a snapshot.
Staff reviews these before they're published on the agenda.
Move to approve the findings and conclusions of case 2024-8027635 Alto Street Development Plan.
Second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Secretary Miranda.
Stain.
Oh. Commissioner McGee.
Stain.
And Commissioner Rieland.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
Can hear a motion to approve the findings and conclusions of case 2025-102763439 Cereus Road Rezoning.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Secretary Miranda. Stain. Commissioner Rieland. Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
Go ahead and find the motion for case 2025-104203730 South Meadows Road Finals Division Plot. Move to it. Is there a second? Please call the roll.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland.
Yes.
Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion has passed.
Thank you. We move on to get out of on the agenda of consent. May I just ask, is this as pro forma as the others were pending any change?
That would be correct.
Your motion to approve case 2024-826 Casa de Toros Canal Subdivision Lifetime Extension.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Secretary Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland. Commissioner Capon.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the mission is best.
You remember nine is a whole business. There's some. Is there anyone? And we'll go to new business and start with case 2025-107061600 St. Michael's Drive Master Plan Amendment.
Chair Smith, just before we proceed, Hoel Cruz Haber is going to be presenting this case. But I do want to let you know of your resources in the room and on Zoom. D. Bangasner, the Civil Engineer is present on Zoom, as is Leah Iffney. And I should, I should know this by now, but she's with the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Daniel Hernandez with the Midtown Metropolitan, I'm sorry, Midtown Redevelopment Authority is also online. And then I believe Leroy Pacheco may be here as our traffic engineer. Just wanted to provide you with that information before we proceed.
Thank you very much.
All right. Vice Chair Smith, Commissioners, thank you very much. It's my first time presenting in front of you all, and I look forward to one of many. To start the first case, ah, new first order of new business in front of you, case is case number 2025-10706. And the, the app, the, the applications for Midtown Master Plan Amendment located at 1600 St. Michael's Drive. The agent is Lisa Gavioli with N V five, and the applicant is the Midtown Redevelopment Agency, MRA. And I'm the case manager, Hoel Cruz Haber. To begin, I'm going to briefly describe the location, general background, how the master plan is applied in our code. So to begin, for all development located in the Midtown area, which is off of Cereus and St. Michael's Drive. We have Cereus here to the north, St. Michael's Drive also to the northeast, and then Saringo Road to the south. Those are the, off St. Michael's and Saringo are the main points of access within the mid, to the Midtown Master Site area. Now, for all new development in this area, Midtown Master Plan requirements is kind of the first line of defense or design criteria in that aspect. Second to that, where the Midtown Master Plan is silent, comes the Midtown Local Innovation Corridor, which was approved in 2016 by the governing body. And I'd like to go back. The master plan was approved in 2022 by a governing body. Now, again, I mentioned where the Midtown Master Plan is silent, the local Midtown Link will fill in those gaps. And then where the Midtown Link and the master plan are silent, the underlying zoning district, which is C2, will fill in those gap. That's just a brief explanation of how plan is applied. These sections to the Midtown Master Plan that are being amended tonight are development standards regulations, subzone standards, facade zone standards, and design standards general to all. To begin, I would actually like to clear up this table in the staff report, which is inaccurate. However, this is the correct version of that. The applicant is proposing to change the subzone subzone for tract O, which is here, and the parcel with the, with the Benildus structure from mixed use neighborhood to mixed use center. In addition, they are proposing to remove their, a facade zone along this portion of, of south of the Midtown Master Plan. And with that, insert a footnote for this facade zone that it would be pursuant to zoning district requirements for qualifying projects that, that would have to be required. Again, I will move on to the subzone standards and what's being proposed there. Essentially, what they're doing is adding a list of permitted uses based on the, or a list of uses based on the permitted use table allowed within the C2 district. So, chapter 14 has B2, which is kind of a, allows all kinds of uses. We kind of talked about as a garbage can of uses because it allows just about everything. And part of the reason behind this is that a lot of prospective developers entering Midtown were finding that a lot of the uses that they were trying to pursue weren't allowed. So this gives them more flexibility. And in section, section 5.5 of the master plan, you can see where they're adopting those standards. In addition, they are changing the wording from special use permit to conditional use permit to be aligned with our code update. Third, we have the change to facade zone standards. They are proposing to remove the facade zone standards or I'm sorry, remove the setback, step back requirements for all buildings at the facade zone to provide more design options for developers. And although they are removing step back requirements, they are inserting footnotes to encourage the use of step backs on our development. And it would also change the three story max for that facade zone to a five story maximum. And that is shown through these clouded bubbles here in that portion of the code. And although those height changes, those height standards are being changed, they would still have to comply with the height requirements as shown in, well, shown in our master plan or the Midtown Link, whichever one has its qual, whatever qualifies for. There's a little blur where they'll be adding that. Yeah.
Explain, you're saying it's going to five, but it's, everything else is unchanged.
So the, they're, they're changing the facade height requirements from three story to five stories. And those five, the future, the future facades, even though it's five stories, they would still have to meet the height requirements for that, or the Midtown Link. So for example, for qualifying residential projects, they are restricted to 52 feet. For all developments in Midtown, not a qualifying residential project, it is 62 feet. So five stories up to those height limits. And then finally, they are including sign building standards and mural and art installation standards, as they were not there prior. And as well as a change to the landscape design. I'll begin with first with the landscape. Originally, the application proposed two inch calipers for the entire Midtown, for the entire master plan area. However, the, the app, the application was transmitted to our landscape engineer, and they provided the following comment. For the street trees to be kept at a four inch caliper and all other trees can be kept at two inches. So they want more mature trees along the street. What the applicant is requesting, two inch caliper for everywhere else. Again, they're proposing building signage. This is really just to clearly define signage in Midtown Master Plan. And as there weren't any standards at all, it would just be simply our, the Midtown Link and chapter 14, the sign standards in there that would regulate that. For site and directional wayfinding signs, they're providing standards or wayfinding signs that you might see on the corner of a parcel that has little arrows showing where one building is, another building is. And they would like for those to be metal structures. This also includes the signage, wayfinding, site directional signage for film studios. As Midtown is catalyst for the film industry in Santa Fe, it is imperative that first responders know exactly where they are going in the event of emergency. So what this allows for is if you driven through Midtown, there are garages that provide direct, direct access to film studios, and simply they would just let her those and tell first responders which letter garage to go to. And then finally, the murals and art installation. Simply, the MRA is just proposing wording, wording so that all murals and sculptures and art installations are approved by them prior to actual installation. The applicant held an E N N on June 3rd, 2025. This planning commission was duly notified on July 7th with site posts also posted on there on July 2nd. And the sites are required to be visible until August. With that concludes my presentation, and I would recommend that the planning commission, sorry. Staff recommends that, the planning commission should recommend that the governing body approve case number 2025-1076. And with the motion below. I will stand for any question.
Thank you. Um, just real quick, going back to the, the approved lists changing to lists or uses that are not approved. I, I just want to clean up. Make sure I understood because what you, the wording used was a little different than what I thought I read in the packet, which is essentially we're changing from proposing permitted uses to uses that are not permitted, right?
So currently, they have a list, the, they have a list of permitted uses that prohibit conditional uses in subzone. All right. Let me, let me clarify that. Currently, the master plan has a list of prohibited uses. And what they would like to, as a part of this amendment, is to provide the list of C2 uses that for the underlying zoning district C2. And incorporate their list of prohibited uses into that C2 document. Essentially gives, just gives plethora of uses for developers to choose from that are already shown in our chat, in our chapter 14 code. Yeah.
That, that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, to follow up on Mr. Miranda's question, are there any prohibited uses that would now be allowed based upon this chain?
I would actually defer that one to the app, to MRA, as they are much more familiar with their list of prohibited uses. For that, yes.
Yeah. We have someone in the.
They'll be presenting that.
They will be presenting, so we can deal with it then.
I'm sure, yeah, they can clarify all this.
Good. Any more questions for? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.
You want to do is the login to some. Go ahead and log.
Apologies for the delay.
Need to, need to be sworn.
Turn off the light on your, or your sound on your computer.
My apologies for the delay. So much technology.
You solemnly sw- yeah, it's uh.
Somebody on Zoom on a laptop in the audience?
Uh, state your name and address for the record.
Sigavioli, eighteen oh seven second.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth. And do so under the penalties of perjury.
Just warning. Please proceed.
There may be an echo. Apologize for that. I apologize for the delay. Um. We're here this evening to speak about Midtown Master Plan amendments.
Thank you, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Lisa Gavioli, I'm Senior Project Director and Planner with Midtown. I'm here today on behalf of Metropolitan Development Agency, City of Santa Fe. Um, joining us online is the M R A Director, Daniel Hernandez. And joining us in the audience is Charlie Vanditti, who's the asset development. Asset Development Manager. So just to situate us in space. The Midtown Site is approximately sixty four point two two acres. Um. Approximately at Surius Road and Saint Michael's Drive. Okay, thank you. Um, so as Hoel mentioned, the underlying zoning for the parcel is C two P U D A. And the overlay district is the Midtown Link. Um, the future land use map identifies the area as transitional mixed use. And just to set a little more context for the site. Um, as Hoel mentioned, the, the Midtown Site is located within the Midtown Local Innovation Corridor District. Um. Which was adopted in twenty sixteen to incentivize higher density, multi-unit residential development. Complementary, non-residential uses. And enlivened, street-oriented pedestrian environment within the demographic and geographic center of the city. And this is important because the Midtown Link provides for specific regulations that guide how and when development can occur and specifically incentivizes higher density, mixed use development, setting the stage for the redevelopment of the Midtown Campus. So just to give a little bit of more background, you're probably familiar, but I just want to run through it really quickly for you. So in two thousand nine, the College of Santa Fe ceased operations and the city purchased the property, leasing it to the Santa Fe University of Art and Design. In twenty twelve, the city collaborated to produce the Remike Document, which is what was a collaborative, community-led revisioning of the Saint Michael's Drive corridor as a vibrant, innovative hub. In twenty sixteen, as I said, the Midtown Link Overlay District was created to incentivize redevelopment efforts in the area. And in twenty eighteen, following the closure of the Santa Fe University Art and Design, the city passed a resolution to initiate the Midtown redevelopment process. And this really initiated what began multiple years of, of extensive community engagement that followed. And resulted in planning guidelines for the redevelopment of the Midtown Site. From twenty nineteen through twenty twenty one, the city took over as master developer. And worked with stakeholders and a consultant team to plan for the redevelopment of the Midtown Site. In twenty twenty two, City Council passed um, a resolution directing staff to pursue a general plan amendment, rezoning and master plan for Midtown. Later that year, City Council passed the Midtown Master Plan as the culmination of this four-year planning effort. Um, the following year, in twenty twenty three, City Council adopted the Midtown Community Development Plan, which establishes the guiding development principles for Midtown. So I just want to take a moment um, to talk about the M R A. Um, the M R, the Midtown Redevelopment Agency was established by the governing body to implement the community's redevelopment vision for the Midtown Site as articulated by the Midtown Plans. And so the Community Development Plan really identifies community benefits to be achieved through the development of the Midtown Site. And these include things like housing choice, affordability, access to jobs and job training, community arts and cultural heritage recognition, whereas the Midtown Master Plan really defines desired land uses, sets of regu- sets of regulations and standards. Um, and an infrastructure framework to enable development and future investment in the Midtown Site. And so essentially, the Midtown Master Plan is the how and the Community Development Plan is the, is the why and the for whom. And together, the two documents establish a community vision for redevelopment of the Midtown Site. Um, and that is, development at the Midtown Site will be, will provide a model for equitable development and sustainable urbanism. And will become a center of culture and community for Santa Feans. See if that fixed it. Did that fix the problem? Oh, my goodness. See, we've already won. Winning. So, why are amendments needed to the Midtown Master Plan? Oh, that's so much better. Let's celebrate for a minute. Uh, so as stewards of the Midtown Master Plan tasked with, with implementing, with implementation, the M R A staff must respond to site conditions and evolving post-COVID market conditions um, to achieve the desired outcomes of the plan. Um, as implementation has begun, refinements to certain elements have been identified in order to achieve this vision. And, and importantly, these amendments are minor tweaks that really do not impact the intent of the plan or change the intent of the plan. And I want to make that really clear. That, that the master plan will continue to be a community-generated document with overwhelming community and governing body support. Um, these amendments don't alter the intentions of the master plan, as I mentioned, and they're intended to really promote and facilitate community-driven outcomes, the master plan. The proposed amendments will have the effect of reducing barriers for implementation, making regulations less prescriptive, more flexible, and better aligning the regulations with the community vision for the Midtown Site. And so as we proceed into going into the details of the amendments, I just want to say that it's not uncommon for ma- for master plans like this to, once, the once impl- implementation begins, that I, you know, certain tweaks are identified um, to really facilitate implementation of the plan. Um. It's impossible to anticipate every nuance and idiosyncrasy of development proposals as they come forward. And um, and, and what the nature of the, the proposed amendments tonight are really to make those minor adjustments to facilitate smooth implementation of the plan. I'm gonna go back just a minute. So we're proposing to remove the Main Street Office facade zone standards from the mixed-use film northern facade zone. Um. And this really is because that Main Street Office is not necessarily compatible with mixed-use film. What is required in the, the Main Street Office facade zone are, are numerous openings in the facade facilitating things like store, like storefronts on the first floor and, and residential above. Um. Furthermore, it wasn't anticipated that residential development would be proposed in the mixed-use film zone, which is actually wonderful because hmm, i- it represents a true mixed-use environment when residential is allowed throughout. And that's also part of the nature of the amendments tonight. So the plan is to insert a footnote stating that the northern facade zone of mixed-use film will be pursuant to the Midtown Link Overlay zoning district requirements for qualifying projects, as mentioned before. And additionally, there's a plan to, there's a proposal to change the, the subzone of tract O um, to mixed-use commercial or mixed-use center. It's called kind of both in the plan. And this really is intended to um, to allow a more diverse range of job creating, commercial mixed uses at tract O, which is a really centrally located tract. So this is the existing development standards regulating plan. And again, we're looking at removing the Main Street Office facade zone from those mixed-use film tracts. And changing the subzone of tract O, including Banildas Hall to mixed-use center or mixed-use commercial. Mc-M U C. And so this is the proposed development standards regulating plan. The next set of proposed amendments has to do with subzone standards, as Hoel mentioned. Uh, we're, we're proposing to remove the, the permitted use table and replace it with a list of prohibited and, and conditional uses that are specific to the Midtown Site. Um, in doing so, we also plan to add reference to the, the permitted uses in the C two um, underlying zoning, as mentioned previously. As well as inserting language that, that the subzones, as defined in the master planned, are the recommended and preferred uses for the parcel. Um. And, and I want to point out also that these changes don't apply to the open space or community-oriented subzones. So that those will be still restricted to a very limited number of uses. But as staff was, has begun implementing the plan, they've realized that adopting, that the adopted permitted use table is more restricted, is more restrictive than desired, and that permitted uses in C two more closely aligned with the vision for the Midtown Site. And as a result, multi-unit residential development will be per- per- permitted throughout the Midtown Site. Um, whereas previously, for instance, it was not permitted in the mixed-use film zones. Um, and importantly, the amendment will strengthen the diversity of uses throughout the site while being guided by those subzone definitions. And I want to take a moment with those subzone definitions, just to be really clear. Um, the subzone definitions will remain in the master plan as originally adopted. Um, these are the recommended and preferred uses for the parcels. Um, and prohibited and conditional uses will align with those inten- intended uses. Um, and otherwise permitted uses will be referenced in the chapter fourteen for C two. So importantly, subzones will still dominate the conversations around development proposals. But this amendment will allow appropriate uses that were not previously anticipated to be considered in the development review process, again, such as residential and the mi- mixed-use film parcels. And rather than overly prescribing uses, the definitions of the subzones will act as recommendations and guides, allowing for flexibility, even unanticipated creativity, innovation, in achieving the vision for Midtown. And so the next set of proposed amendments has to do with the facade zone standards. Um, here primarily, we're proposing to remove the step-back requirement for all buildings at the facade zone. Um, allowing that, allowing the facades to achieve five stories, which is permitted um, throughout Midtown elsewhere. So matching the height that's allowed elsewhere in Midtown. And additionally, uh, proposing to insert language that encourages the use of step-backs, menstruation and other forms of facade articulation. This may have the impact of increasing density within the facade zones, but more importantly, it's allowing for flexibility to include step-backs where it's suitable and where it's desired. Um, and step-backs and other forms of facade articulation are, are going to be strongly encouraged in the language of the, the amended master plan. And through the development review process with M R A and P L U staff. And again, taking the approach of not overly prescribing requirements, but relying on the robust design guidance and intentions that have been thoroughly described in the Midtown Master Plan in order to achieve the vision. It allows for ease of implementation a- as well as, 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 as I mentioned, creativity and innovation and flexibility to work with unknown conditions of development proposals. So just wanted to highlight the facade zones as they are adopted. Just as a reminder, those will remain unchanged in their definitions. And I wanted to also mention that in addition to the facade guidelines, facade zone guidelines, there's also frontage types um, included in the plan. And, and this really speaks to the typological form-based approach of this plan. Um, which is really focused on form and place-making. It's tailored to the unique character and context of the site. Um, it encourages innovation through flexibility and a streamlined process. Um, and that's really the nature of, of these amendments this evening. And finally, we are proposing to add some language to the. And finally, we are proposing to add some language to the design standards general to all. Currently, there's no mention of landscape standards in the plan nor mention of signage or temporary art installation standards. And so, the proposal is to add language that requires landscape design to follow chapter 14 for the Midtown Link with a note that the caliper for new street trees, in accordance with staff's recommendation, is four inches at the time of planting, and that otherwise, at the Midtown site, it will be two-inch caliper at the time of planting. Additionally, we'll be adding signage and temporary art language adapted from the rail yard master plan and inserting a statement that signage located in the Midtown site is governed by chapter 14 and the requirements found in 14-8.10. So, this is the proposed language for building signage. I don't think I need to read it verbatim, but I'll give you a moment to take a look at it. And again, site directional and wayfinding signage. We have some proposed additional text there specifying that directional signage will be metal, finished in durable, high-quality paint or natural metal finishes. And it goes on to specify further, further details of that kinds of signage. I want to point out here that we did comply with staff's recommendation to increase the maximum, or yeah, the maximum size of signage or directional wayfinding to 380 feet. We had originally proposed 250. And finally, we have proposed text regarding murals and art installations. I wanted to point out here that this language was guided by by advice from the Arts and Culture Department and really learning from past experience around murals. Arts and cultured staff, as well as the city attorney, are developing a new mural agreement to clarify maintenance specifications, materials, reviews, and approvals, et cetera, for murals. And so, we submit that our application complies with all of the approval criteria from chapter 14-3.9D1. Those, our responses to those approval criteria are in your packet. I won't go into detail here, but we will stand for questions regarding those. And just to conclude, Amendment 1 to the Midtown Master Plan is a necessary and strategic refinement to facilitate the timely and effective implementation of the city's long-held vision for the Midtown site. As stewards of the Midtown redevelopment plans, the MRA has carefully identified minor, yet meaningful, updates that align with the plan's core intent, reflect specific site conditions, and respond to current market dynamics. These amendments are consistent with the policy direction outlined in the Midtown Community Development Plan, the Midtown Link Overlay District, and the City of Santa Fe General Plan. The MRA staff proposes Amendment 1 to enhance clarity, to support mixed-use development, and ensure that multi-unit residential housing is achievable throughout the site, all while preserving the integrity of the original Midtown vision and intent. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration and stand for questions at this time.
Questions?
Thank you for the presentation. My question is, is that by changing the zoning in C2, even though you have the prohibited uses, there could be an applicant that could apply for a variance to allow, even though there is a prohibited use. Is that correct? So, a developer could come in and say, even though this is prohibited, now we have a C2 zoning, we would be allowed if we get a variance from the city?
Madam Chair Clow, Vice Chair Smith. My name is Carla Vendetti. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again, planning commission. It's also a pleasure to serve the MRA in my current role as the Asset Development Manager. As of December, January even, the governing body voted and approved that the MRA move forward with direct disposition of our parcels. What that means is that we must move forward with both an exclusive negotiations agreement and a direct disposition agreement in order for a developer to develop on our sites. So, they must go through the MRA, our commission, as well as the governing body. In the case that they are asking for a variance, it is likely the MRA will not suggest approval or even get to an ENA. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Smith, Member Reland. The, when it comes to a use, either a use is permitted or prohibited. So, variances can only be granted to the aspects of the use. But if, for instance, there was a doggy daycare and that was not permitted, it was listed as prohibited, that's not permitted. So, under the C2 Zone District, you know, it's not listed as well. So, uses are very different and typically don't get any type of variances unless there's a code interpretation.
Other question?
Question about potential future variances with the facade changing and doing the five stories. Did I hear right that in C2, the range is 52 feet to 62 feet?
That's correct.
Or, okay.
Midtown site specifically.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Capen?
Capen, yep.
Capen?
Yep.
In the case of height, that is regulated by the Midtown Link. So, on the SF UAD site, all development may go up to 62 feet. Qualifying projects in the link beyond the site may go up to 52.
Okay, so, is 62 enough for a five-story building to be of reasonable height per story with everything included and, you know, on the roof and everything?
Vice Chair Smith, Commissioner, I'd like to defer to our MRA director who's on. He's an architect, and he could better speak to floor plates, stories, and all of what we're seeing.
I don't, yeah, and I don't, I'm not trying to bring up the nitty-gritty. I just want to make sure that we're not gonna, if we're talking about changing this to five stories, that we're not all of a sudden gonna see one after the other variance. Oh, I want to, you know, we need a little bit more to make a reasonable apartment height or something and make sure that this is, yeah.
Chair Clow, Vice Chair Smith, and Member Capen. I just want to also clarify that we're not proposing to change the height to five stories. The height is already five stories. So, we're proposing at the facade zones to allow the facades to meet what is already allowed in terms of height.
What? Can you clarify? Can you say that one more time? What am I missing?
You would be able to attain five stories at 62 feet. Am I correct in, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
What, are you about to help me?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen. So, the issue is that five stories, I think the question that I'm hearing is, can you do five stories in 62 feet? And that would be very tight, but it can be done. So, but given current construction techniques, ceiling heights and the like, it's not unreasonable to think that there might be some request for variances. One consideration would be, though, was the community was very adamant about not having buildings taller than five stories. So, the amount of change would have to be very small for staff to be able to recommend that type of change. So, and then what is being discussed is the step-back. So, the facade itself is permitted to be straight up and down instead of having a step-back at a certain level. So, and that's what's being proposed right now, a minimum 10-foot step-back is required.
I think I'm gonna have some follow-up questions, but we can move along.
Yes, Commissioner.
Regarding the removed permitted uses and then the addition of the prohibited uses, is that in the packet, those prohibited uses and then the conditional uses? Is that what I'm seeing? Okay. And my question is, because I know that the Midtown Center is supposed to be somewhat, you know, focused around film and production of film. And some of the prohibited uses, like lighting, assembling, and manufacturing, or possibly vocational or trade schools, light industrial. I guess I'm not quite clear on what defines light industrial, but I'm thinking if they had, you know, a warehouse that's creating lights for a film production or something, would that be, would that fall under these categories?
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Member McReynolds. The light industrial uses, the intent is to control for external impacts. And so, I know that with some of the production of film, production requires some hazardous materials and the like. And so, it's very, a unique type of process. But the overall intent, and we've vetted this with the partners in the community and the productions of film, and it seems like that these uses would cover everything that they need to accomplish. Perfect. Thank you.
Other question? Yes.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
Rondo.
Just, I was curious about the sign square footage. So, the 380? What, it's 380 square feet per, like, what is the unit that that 380 square applies to? Just seems like a lot.
Commissioner, Commissioner Clow, Vice Chair Smith, Commissioner, Secretary Morondo. This was actually determined by me. And the idea came from simply getting the average or the largest garage that the film studio's at and making it so that's up to 380. So, the largest garage is at 380 square feet, and all the other garages are lower in square footage and size. Does that answer? Okay.
Questions? Time for a motion to, we have public comment? Is there public comment on this?
Members, my name is Dan.
Sir, you've been sworn in.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Name is Daniel Rice, address 2284 Caillipolito.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury? Advocate has been sworn.
As a resident of, as a resident of the neighborhood, the La Cedros neighborhood, quarter mile from the Seringo entrance of the site, and having lived in the area for 19 years, I have an interest in what exactly is going on at the site. So, I'm not a planning, not a planner, I'm an interested citizen, not a public speaker. So, this may be a little jerky, herky-jerky, but I have, I have several concerns about the proposed plan amendments. And perhaps I can read a few things to go along with it. Reading from the NB5 application letter, it says, "The MRA, the city's agency responsible to implement the steward, and steward the Midtown redevelopment plan, has identified minor changes to the Midtown master plan that align with its core vision, intent, goals, and objectives, and that further policy directives for the stated area, as stated in the Midtown Community Plan, Midtown Link, Overlay District, et cetera. I find that the proposed plan amendments are far from minor, in particular, the change in zoning and in the step-back requirements. This plan was developed with considerable public input over four years, and right now, we are in a plan amendment process that was not notified to citizens in an email. I received all the city emails. I did not receive any notification for this particular plan amendment." So, I find the process to be questionable to begin with, given that the plan has been adopted and was developed over four years with considerable citizenry. So, to consider this plan amendment, I would suggest would require a more comprehensive public notification process and public input process. I was on early neighborhood notification meeting for this plan amendment. I was the only person that showed up for the first half hour of that meeting online. But this has not been sufficiently visioned and visualized by the public who put their input into this. And I just want to bring that as a citizen to this, the ones who get to recommend this or not recommend this, and this plan, what the better process. Open public process, more input on the changes that are being proposed. So, with respect to the change, the Midtown Master Plan supplements the link overlay and is more prescriptive and proscriptive. It's, reading from the master plan itself, "Midtown Master Plan is the culmination of a four-year planning effort, blah, blah, blah. The Midtown Master Plan presents policies and standards that help prioritize investment and regulate private development to deliver a future for the site consistent with the community's aspiration," which, again, are reflected in this plan, not in amendments to the plan. Amendments to the plan do not reflect the plan. They modify the plan in ways that are significant changes to that. To claim that the amendments are consistent with the plan when they significantly change the plan is patently not true. Just doesn't make sense a lot. So, from that standpoint, being forthright about what the plan changes are and how they affect this plan is important to me as a citizen, and it's important to this is an open process. However, this goes down, and again, I'm in support of redevelopment of Midtown. I have my own opinions about it, but it's important that the process be proper for everybody to participate. In the master plan, on page 15, "One of the planning guidelines is to catalyze Midtown Link zoning area. Consider how owners of properties in the Midtown Link zoning area can redevelop their properties in ways that will advance the principles and uses described." So, this master plan is more prescriptive and more definitive in order to provide a context for the link. This is the center of the link. And so, diminishing the standards to meet what's current link standard is absolutely contrary to the intent of the Midtown Master. And that includes changing the zoning standards. It includes changing the permitted use tables. These proposals are not consistent with the Midtown Master Plan. We weaken the Midtown Master. We create recommendations as opposed to requirements we all know are not actionable. You can, with the ENA process for development of these parcels, there is no competitive process by which you're going to score this project against another project. But you get what you get. So, if you don't have these requirements in place, you can't hold them to account for that. There's just not a good process for that. The process currently exists. It's the step-back requirements and the zoning requirements. Now, with respect to the zoning changes or the statement with respect to the facade change at the mixed-use film zone, there are no residential requirements at the mixed-use film zone. We all recognize that. The proposal is stating that by adopting this amendment, now you can, the intent would be to provide for housing in the mixed-use film zone. We all know what zoning is about. The film studio zone intentionally excludes housing because it's an incompatible use. I don't know where y'all live, but I live within a quarter mile of the Midtown site. Last summer's production of The Missing Bus, or whatever the heck it was, the Apple Studios production was extremely disruptive. And being in that, in the midst of that, as a resident, if you're going to put residents on the mixed-use film zone, I think is an incompatible use, and it's a mistake. That's why it was not included as residential in the original master. So, the contention that this somehow meets the objectives of the master plan when the entire rest site are developable parcels for residential mixed-use use, it is, on its face, illogical. However, it looks However, it looks to me as a citizen, having examined all of what's going on at midtown, that this is an accommodation for Philip Jesaway and the Aspect Studios who want to develop housing in that zone. And that may well be, and that may well get approved, but just understand that that's what it looks like to this member. He's got a backroom deal or the city needs to develop these parcels. We all understand that, but it doesn't smell right. You guys are going to let him build that building. So that, that's the concern about the zoning in the mixed use film area. I think the step back requirements are important to consider from the standpoint of what this community expects architecturally. Pueblo architecture is customarily has rooftop terraces, rooftop uses and step back facades. That's the intent. And to remove that step back and allow five story tall, street facing facades is not at the very least, if there's a better proposal from one of the developers or a facade that doesn't meet the exact step back requirements, but that appears favorable. That's where the variance process comes in. It exists, it's available to everyone. So it, there's nothing in the plan currently prohibits that type of development. But to remove that step back requirement means you've lost that tool. You can recommend it, but again, there's nothing actually. So um, I'll conclude um, by just saying that, you know, as I live in the neighborhood, the main concern that I have with the midtown project, not entirely relevant to this discussion, is the access to the site and the impact it's going to have with traffic in the area. The existing uh, traffic plan indicates there's access to Yano's on Cereus, which doesn't exist. There's no exit from midtown towards Cereus. There's no exit towards Yano's. The city is really seriously, truly interested in this being the center of Santa Fe. A Yano Street exit is required. There's private property available there that can be purchased or negotiated to get directly to Yano Street from midtown. Same at Cereus. Met the uh, Saint Mike's exit is extremely dangerous. People are going to go five mile elementary school, a high school, and it's already over capacity at the times of day when people have Thank you very much.
Raise your right hand. Pick your name and address for the record.
Mary Schrubin, twenty one nineteen Ranch of Saringo Road.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury.
Do.
Been sworn in.
My, my primary comment is about the change from uh, two inch to four inch trees. Uh, while I think it's more appropriate to plant and maintain water trim care for uh, an older tree in an existing area. I doubt that anything that I've read in the existing master plan supports the installation of those trees. So I have two parts to my question. One is about the push, the, the placement of trees. When you've removed the setbacks, where they will be placed? Because as I understand it, the sidewalk standard is still sidewalk next to curb, no devil's strip. And no, now no setbacks are possible. Where is a four inch mature tree going to go? And uh, how is a building going to be replaced around it? So that it doesn't bust out the windows. So down in the main part of the midtown campus, that's a concern. Uh, second part of my concern is for the class trees, the mature trees that are already planted there and whether or not there will be any serious realistic attempt to try to save any of those uh, for in an open space area or something like that. Um, which requires also water maintenance, trimming and care. And so far there's nothing in, in plan for any of those things. Uh, the third area is the proposed uh, bikeway park element that lies between the drainage ditch and the current east perimeter road. And um, I'm, haven't seen anything in the plan about what kind of care is going to be taken for the trees that exist there, whether any of them will be retained, how they'll be removed, what will be planted in the place of them, on and on and on. And none of that is detailed either. So planet, and there's certainly going to be no watering, uh, underground irrigation in that area, I've been told. So uh, that means that those trees will die also. And um, I'm very concerned about that. The midtown campus, if you do fly over, is a pretty well treed in area in some spots, not all spots. And um, we under, I understand completely about the uh, film studio not wanting the trees on their property uh, for many reasons, and they're all film reasons. Um, but that also connects to the bikeway part and it connects to the rest of the campus. And so I don't see how the integration of that is going to happen. I know the city's history with maintaining two inch trees is utter failure. So I'm glad you've abandoned that, but I don't see the complimentary part or the watering, feeding, carrying, trimming, all the rest of it that's going to take place. And nor any requirement that any building without setback is going to have a tree, not have a tree. All those lovely drawings that we were shown at the South Side Library and other places. That all is out the window now, as I understand, with no setbacks. So that means no trees on the streets. And that means there's no mid, there's no medians in those streets. And so there's no trees. So how does that work out? I'd sure like an answer to that question. Thank you very much.
Are there public comments? Is anybody on the, on the Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom, if you would like to comment on this case, please raise your hand. No additional comments, Chair Smith.
Vice Chair Smith, if I, if I may correct the record in a few places, I would like to start by saying that we've had advanced and regular communication with our neighbors and community organizations. We've spoken with Chainbreaker at least once a month to speak about density and the impact that our development as the MRA will have on the Hopewell Man neighborhood to the northeast of the site. In addition, we're also working on a neighborhood stabilization plan to help mediate any of those gentrification uh, worries that they have had as part of the community. We've been collaborating with land use on this and we're moving forward with a can't say the consulting firm, I want to, but with a consulting firm on this effort at this time. In addition, I'd like to point to our community development plan because we are committed to our triple bottom line approach. And that means that we're looking at sustainability in the way of the environment, equity and the economy. So keeping that in mind, when we talk about the prohibited and permitted uses, there will be a permitted there will be a point that points to chapter fourteen in the permitted use table as it exists now. Right now with the permitted use table within the master plan and our chapter fourteen standards for the entire city, it does get confusing for potential developers and individuals to navigate both this plan and chapter fourteen as it currently exists. We will also have a prohibited use list, as we said, that will carry forward any prohibited uses where it does become more restrictive on the site. And finally, when it comes to trees, um, looking ahead, we have done a tree survey. We've been working diligently with the Parks Division. There's been a tree survey of the entire site as well as the eastern portion that will be known as a royal park. It's about five acres and it's between the shopping center, the Thomas Properties Shopping Center and that east road. In all cases of trees, they will be irrigated as required by chapter fourteen. Also, in the case of medians and road types, I'd like to point to page ninety seven of the master plan. That's where you will see the neighborhood street width pathways. This is just one example of the many types of street cross sections. There will be medians, there will be bike lanes. A step back in this case is once step back and a step back are very different. A step back is the distance from the right of way on the property or parcel. And then a step back is once you reach a certain height, there is then a gradual or sudden step back of a couple of feet. In this case, let's think of it as maybe a roof terrace would be up there. So I just want to point that out and correct the record. That there will be street trees as required, um, there will be setbacks.
Yes, sir. Oh, I thought, yeah.
While you're up here, um, it sounds like you have been continuing to collaborate with a lot of the amazing community organizations that were involved with this way back when. I remember that process. It was really inspiring. Um, in addition to Chainbreaker, who is absolutely would be at the table for this one. Um, are there any of the other groups and organizations from back then still connected as far as who you would reach out to for community input in that area? The stakeholders still the same?
A lot of the stakeholders remain the same, of course, and we're working with the Midtown Arts and Design Alliance, which is now currently leasing space in the Visual Arts Center. So we've been working with them, um, speaking to them about their experience as they enter into a DDA from an ENA and their process moving forward on the site as well. And they, of course, have organizations, eleven organizations with a letter of intent to occupy that building under a lease with them.
Yes, ma'am.
A little bit different direction while, while you're up here, and this may be for staff. Um, with the changes specifically to track O, um, will any of these designated subzone changes affect the required open space requirements for that? I know this is like multi-layered, but does it change anything as it pertains to what they would have to provide for open spaces for housing being in there?
It does not change the open space requirements at this point. And I would love to discuss that more because it gets into further detail about active and uh, non-active water harvesting. So that would then further reduce open space, but that existed in the plan currently.
Thank you.
There are other Yes.
To the gentleman that was at twenty two eighty two or eighty four Caillipolito, I met twenty two sixty four Caillipolito. And our families had that house in nineteen eighty five. Uh, so I do hear him and there are more aspects to just the Hopewell Man that will be affected by this. So just making sure that the outreach from staff and from the city is getting to everybody because I will support him on the sense that I did not get anything from my household. Making sure that everybody in the community is being
Yes.
Really passionate about this project. I'm really excited about it. Thank you for all the work that's being done. Um, and these, these is important. A lot of work has gone into this and a lot of vision and y'all are doing a lot of work to keep that going. And I understand post COVID tricky things. Um, can you speak a little bit, just I think to help everybody understand about the step backs? What was the original intent of the community in requiring that in this original plan? And then why are they being, why are we being asked to change that?
I would say about that is that step backs, the intent of step backs is to introduce I mean, articulation in the facade, that it's not just sheer. Um, I think the intent of removing the requirement, but in, but encouraging um, them instead is to allow for more flexibility and creativity in applying that that method of facade articulation.
I think for the record, for the commissioners, I don't know how folks are feeling about this. I think I would prefer for the step backs to continue. And if a developer wants to change that, that they come forward with that request as a variance instead of that being I think otherwise we're just going to end up with a bunch of five story flat base buildings, which I do think was and, and feel free to respond to that. I have one other little question about design after that, but um, why, why not have them come forward if they want something different than what was originally intended with that?
Member Capen, we, we don't want to over design for developers, right? We want to make sure that the artistic qualities of architects and designers are showing through in this site. And when we do look at our plaza here downtown, there are some articulations, right? We do see a variety of storefronts and that developed throughout time, right? Especially with Santa Fe style as that continued. So we don't see a lot of, you know, the same portales right next to each other in the plaza. And I think that's for the benefit of the community and that happened naturally versus what we're trying to do um, currently as the plan exists, it's over prescriptive.
I hear that. I think for the sake of our conversation, um, and I'd be interested if anyone wants to have that conversation about this, that that a lot of the, I would, I would push back a little bit that I think a lot of the charm, say, if you want to talk about downtown, is that there are step backs in places, right? So there's patio tops, there's terraces, there's places where guests there all the way up. But then, you know, there is that. And I'm, I guess my concern is that changing this to just allow a flat, five story facade, it would seem to me that that would be a way, an easier way for development to happen. That may be easier to reduce costs or maximize housing, which I'm for. But I'm worried about there not being interest in articulation and creativity in it. And it seems like having it and then having them need to come, if they want to just do a flat five story facade, might be a approach that would get us to the place that the intent was, which was to have form and interest in architectural, interesting streetscapes.
Right, of course. And remember Capen, if I may, they, they being the developers have to go through many rounds. Like I said, ENA and DDA, and that includes the review of their architecture. So on our commission, we have various backgrounds, a few of those including architects that are well known in New Mexico. And they will be reviewing the designs as well as massaging those designs. So I want to assure that this has to go through many bodies and be seen by many eyes before getting approved.
Mr.?
Uh, May, hi, this is Daniel Hernandez, the Director of the Metropolitan Development Agency. I'm sorry I'm not there. Um, there's been a family health crisis and um, I had to come home um, to California. But um, if I may, do I need to get sworn in or?
No, as staff, Daniel, I think you're fine.
Okay.
No, you need to be sworn in.
I think, I think the question is really important and what I'm, we're already receiving offers from developers. Um, we're massaging their offers because we want to make sure that the architecture represents the integrity of the master plan and the community development plan. But what we're also finding is, you know, what, what something like a step back does is it doesn't anticipate adjacencies. It doesn't anticipate the kind of the nuances of a corner. Um, and it becomes so prescriptive, it's like, really, I have to do it there too? Versus like us saying, look, it would be really great for us to have an outdoor second story, third story patio or you know, all and kind of articulate the building based on the specific conditions of that site. So we reb, I mean, one of the reasons why the MRA was created was to be able to actually engage developers in a more meaningful way, particularly as stewards of this master plan, it could be developed a plan to allow us that flexibility to negotiate these terms before it gets to the design, I mean, uh, disposition, development agreement. So that we can confidently go to the podium and say, you know, here's the proposal, here's the architecture. And um, and here's how it meets the intent and goals of the master plan.
There are other comments?
Follow up. So I, thank you, Mr. Smith. My understanding is, is that once we, if we approve or deny this, no developer is going to be sitting in front of us. So we're going to be giving you guys a length, like Commissioner Capen saying. Uh, so it kind of puts us in a little group here to where we don't have a final say of this other than right now. And if we just say And if we just say, have at it, you guys deal with developers and we're not involved at all anymore beyond this. Am I correct in understanding that?
Well, member Ryland, I would, I would submit that it's not a blank slate, that the Midtown Master Plan is very specific. What it envisions and it requires. And that development review will happen through the MRA and the MRA Commission. So and if any further amendments are needed to the plan, you will, you will have a say.
But again, if we approve this night, we are giving you the ability to have straight sides, no longer step backs on the buildings that are going up five stories.
Member Ryland, I would, I would also suggest that it's not, we're not, we're not proposing to eliminate step backs. We're proposing to eliminate the requirement step backs. It's a different approach, allowing more flexibility and applying that value as opposed to requiring it in such a way that is, is often quite challenging to implement in practice. And I can speak to that from personal experience in, in having to apply those standards in the BCD. That, that there are, there are issues that come up repeatedly with applying that requirement. Where more flexibility would result in a better design, more creativity. And again, as Daniel spoke to, allow for designers and architects to be able to account for adjacencies, to account for site conditions that are kind of impossible to anticipate.
I yield to Ms. Landboy.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Ryland is correct in that many of these projects will be approved administratively and won't come to this board. So just as to process, I wanted to clarify the rationale as being presented by the applicant.
And commissioners, Vice Chair Smith, Commissioner Cloud, Vice Chair Cloud, commissioners. I would also like to include that we're qualifying residential projects in the Midtown Link that will be reviewed administratively. However, for all development projects that are not qualifying residential, they will be going to you for development plans for that kind of approval. So you wouldn't be completely taken out of the process.
Sure. Miranda.
Chair Smith. So Paul, if you could just stay up a little bit longer, just let me know if I'm right after I say a few things. So qualifying project essentially is really based on a predominant percentage of the development being multifamily. And it's basically just the link it, it's that percentage that's within the length. So essentially, actually really comes back to that 62-foot issue. The link essentially promotes a mixed-use building where if you're going to have commercial, it's going to be on the first floor. And that's the 62 feet actually gives the link a certain amount of control. Because if you do 18 feet of commercial on that first door, you're kind of bunk on, right? So it means it kind of, it limits in a certain way. If you want to do a five-story building, you can't have a lot of commercial use. There's, there's actually some built-in control when that's you did all residential 62 feet, you can do that all day. Basically 12 and a half feet per story residentially, if you did them all, that's very but if you actually the 62 feet is just wanted to say it because it wasn't necessarily left out in the discussion, but that's at least how I've always seen. Because you can't do, one, you can't do more than a certain percentage of any way to be qualifying. We'd have to see it if they were proposing a large commercial use. And wanting to go to five stories would have to. So to me at least, that's why I do not see it as its potential change in terms of use. Because if the use is going to be there and it's a qualifying project, so we wouldn't see it. It's going to be a small percentage of building. Or they can't have a very high ceiling. Kind of cuts down on a lot of these, like you're not going to have a hard even though it's kind of approved use, but you can't do that height anyway. There's that piece of it. But also, you know, it, just in terms of the step backs, the the, the step backs, the way it's changing is still a qualifying project can go that high without step backs. I, I see both sides as working in the industry I work in. When you give those prescriptive setbacks, it's not an issue if we're developing individual property by individual property, but if you develop a whole block with the same setbacks, that's when you end up with developments that look like.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Can you speak into the mic so everyone online can hear you?
Sorry. It's when, to me, that's when you end up with developments that look a little bit like Disneyland, for lack of a better term, because everybody has to meet the same dimensional standards. And so I think that is the spirit of this. I guess what I would ask the applicants was, are any consideration of instead of a step back standard, if there's something less restrictive, like actually like the kind of thing you almost see in residential neighborhood associations where for a certain amount of feet, you need to have a certain amount of undulation. Something that was really pretty, like easily met. Yeah. Was there any thought to something like that or?
So we hadn't discussed that, excuse me, Vice Chair Smith, member Morondo, we hadn't discussed the undulation in that way. We were looking at the pedestrian experience, of course, with these facade zones. And the trees along the streets would then be four-inch calipers and kind of create the room effect we're looking for. So the articulation could happen more naturally, independently throughout each development.
If, if I may speak against Daniel Hernandez. And Lisa, if you can maybe point to it where I can't. The, the, the master plan actually has articulate requirements for articulation in the various facade zones. So it talks about the level of fenestration and entryways to begin to create that, I think what you just described. And but it does happen at the pedestrian level. It doesn't necessarily happen at the upper levels. So here you see, for example, around the plaza, we have these arcades that will be required. That's not going away. In the more neighborhood sort of scale buildings, there's also requirements for articulation for doorways to meet the street frontage. Those kinds of things are described throughout the, in that facade zone requirement section of the master plan. That stuff is not going away.
Chair Smith, if I could ask. I did forget about those. So I appreciate it. I guess but am I right that the only way you would have something that was straight up and, and the bigger reason that you want to potentially do that is we're talking about more of a boulevard, right? This is a broader pedestrian streetscape than you normally see in Santa Fe. Could you just talk about the one, how much, how wide is that from building to curb? And then two, the only, am I right that the only way to not go to this commission straight up is if it was a qualifying project?
I'm just going to add, if it is a qualifying residential project, it would be reviewed administratively. Whereas the other way around, all developments not qualifying, you would say.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add to that, and that is only if they trigger the development plan requirement, which is whether they're within a specific distance to residential development or they're 30,000 square feet anywhere in the city.
Vice Chair Smith, member Morondo, if we take a look once again at page 97 as an example, you'll see here that 5.2B Neighborhood Street has a right-of-way of 80 feet. So that, of course, includes the sidewalks, bike lanes, medians, in some cases, parallel parking and of course, traffic lanes.
Again, if I may, the, the master plan has different street types throughout. So there, I mean, we are hearing from developers like, wow, your public street right-of-ways are really wide. But they're made that way to accommodate a variety of uses. So not only the pedestrian traffic, but there's two-way bike traffic. There's the median strip, the bio swells for the trees to be planted. And then there's the, the two-way vehicular automobile circulation. So they're very wide streets. And that's also why we felt comfortable in speaking with land use staff about, you know, we have really wide streets. There's opportunity for density along this, this type of street dimension. But I think, you know, again, what we want to do is to be able to negotiate the fineness of the architecture quality that is nuanced based on site conditions and locations of the building. And it's a huge responsibility that we have. I mean, we've heard all tonight, throughout the night about the community planning process that we went through. We are in constant communication with those groups. And it's really important for us to maintain that level of integrity and trust that we have with them. We have no reason to deviate from that. So, you know, again, our charge as a redevelopment agency is to make sure that we're getting, that we're stewards of the master plan and we're getting the type of architecture and urban design that is described in the master plan and community development plan. There's still a lot of prescription we have to comply with and we're not hearing from developers balking at that. We just want to provide the flexibility to kind of, to work with their architecture as they, as we negotiate and massage their proposals.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
I just want to follow up. I mean, I understand what the ask is and I like what you were saying where I think I'm just hesitant to make it, you know, the five-story flat facade for what you're saying. If we have one, these buildings aren't five stories in these pictures. It's a lot taller than that and bigger and a flat facade is going to go, I think it, could there be somewhere in the middle when it's proposed to the developers, the language or whatever gets put in this that really articulates the interest in in there being variation? I understand like a certain, you know, this and what happens at the corner and next to the building. I, I I understand that and why that's part of what's being asked. But I think we're missing a little bit of, talk about like control or what the community wanted or the vision of this or what to do. I'm all for the density in this area. It's a great spot for it. But I think if we give it to like a, just a blank slate, we will see some creativity and we will also see some uncreativity. And we want to inspire the creativity or at least for some of it to keep it a little more interesting was the intent of this. It's an art community, you know, like, so I don't want to take this on too long, but I know we do need to pass this along to council and I don't know if you would be open to thinking about some other language, if not this, somewhere in between these two places to land.
If I may, I, I, I appreciate your thinking and you're willing to figure that out. I, I am too. We don't want blank facades just going up five stories. We really want great architecture and articulation of great architecture in this process. So I, I'm happy to figure it out and work with, with the land use director and her staff to come up with a compromise language to make sure that we're prioritizing these kinds of projects that we don't want to see. And maybe it's just the opposite. We do not want to see blank facades of five-story buildings. So like, don't give us that. But if, if, if I'm, if we may, it would be, I, I'm willing to figure out what that, that fine language, that text might be.
If you could just go through Chair Smith for your, just to keep the decorum a little bit. I mean, we definitely want to hear from you, but if you could please ask him for comment in the future.
Permission granted retroactively. With, with that accommodation in mind and understood, is it time for a motion to proceed? Mr. Chair.
Chair Smith, there is just one more. Might, might it be helpful to describe the review process built in? Because I know a little bit about it, but it might make others feel better about what they're agreeing to.
Chair Smith, member Morondo, if I may defer to our director on Zoom. Daniel, if you'd like to better detail the review process for our commissioners.
Yes, so an offerer can submit an offer for a development parcel at Midtown. They, and we ask for a site plan and their development program initially as a sort of an initial idea about what it is that they're wanting to build there. That development program then tells us whether it's an allowable use and whether they are going to ask for variance. That has not occurred in the offers we're receiving so far. That once we, you know, sort of agree on the general terms of a price offer and their site plan and their, their development program, we start discussing the fine points of it to enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement. But before we do that, the MRA Commission reviews it. As Carly just articulated, there are community members there that represent sort of advocacy and community groups as well as the dean of the School of Architecture at UNM is on our commission. And so they want, they've set aside sort of a design process so that it's not within our typical MRA commission meetings. But there's a special meeting in which they would review plans before we get into the ENA, the exclusive negotiation agreement. During that exclusive negotiation, negotiation agreement period, it could last a year for them to pull their architecture together. And we've asked them to submit from concept to schematic at 30, 60, 90% so that we have a really good idea about where they're heading and we can provide comment. We always and often interact with Heather, the direct land use director and her team to make sure that we're keeping on track, that they're not seeing, seeing any deviations from the master plan. So that by the time we get to the end of that exclusive negotiation agreement, we have a pretty good idea about what their architecture and site plan looks like. And we also leave room within the disposition development agreement process. And that is approved by the governing body. So even in the, the DDA, the disposition development agreement, we have standards and requirements in there for submission of, once they get beyond schematic through DD's design development. And before they enter into construction documents, they submit drawings to us for our review again to make sure that what we've initially approved is what they're still agreeing to and their architecture has been refined so that we can comment on it before then it goes to the formal application period to the land use office. And then they have to go to the land use office. And again, the land use office is reviewing it from the, for the architecture as well as the compliance with the master plan.
Thank you. So are we ready for a motion that will?
Excuse me, Chair Smith, you have to close the public comment.
I'm sorry?
You have to close the public comment.
Oh, thanks. Are there any more public comments? We will close. I'm sorry.
Hold up.
I'm sorry. I, I need a, just an understanding of the rules here.
Single public comment?
Or you have to close public comment. Quickly, it's just one time.
That's, that's what I thought. Thank you. When we close public comment. Could we hear a motion to prove or recommend to the governing body that they either approve or deny this with somehow the understanding that there will be an accommodation within according to the conversations that have been.
I suppose Commissioner Smith, or Chair Smith.
What?
I, I'd like to ask the applicant, I suppose a question about process of how that could happen. So essentially, if we put in a motion that, oh, let's say that. that the, that, that this was, you know, passed as it was in the link, other than if three consecutive developments happened that one of those three or the adjacent development would have to vary by five. Would that make any sense? Would that be actionable?
Vice Chair Smith, Member Morando, in the case of the link, there is no required step back at three stories. This is entirely independent to the master plan. In the case of making that, I imagine you, you could amend your motion, but this would be up to legal.
Okay, Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Morando, and the planning commission. The, I'll use an example of the art house, which is immediately outside of Midtown master plan area, but still within the link, there was the step back requirement there as well. So even within the link, the required step back is found in the land development.
Yeah, point of inquiry. As you were saying, Vice Chair Smith, that your recommendation would be to the governing body, the same would be as your condition. Your condition would be that recommendation to the governing body. Just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Let's craft a condition that would kind of encapsulate what we've been talking about that makes sense to the applicant and just help us put it in, like, what is an appropriate way to capture the essence of what we're talking about?
Yeah, all right. I'll work, work with management over there, but I think, Chair Smith. I'm gonna go home.
If, if I could, if I can just go over some of the key points, just if we can bullet point those key issues, and then perhaps give me a little bit of time to work on a condition, and we can move to the next case so that we can come back to this, so we can table this until, until after the next case. Because I think there's a lot of people in the audience that are gearing up for the next case. Then we can come back to this, and I can work with both the, the team for the MRA as well as get to your essence. If you want to give me some bullet points to work with, I'll generate something for you tonight.
And may, in that spirit, may I motion to table this through a time later in the meeting?
Do you want to discuss bullets first? Yeah. Oh, great, yeah. So motion to table case till later in the meeting. However, staff, however much time staff needs within the meeting.
If you want to go to the next case, it'll give me time to work with Carly. But if you want to give me the, if you recommend the tabling, and before you vote on that tabling, you elaborate on those bullets and then, and then, well, I guess you can't, yeah.
You can vote on them.
Post-ment that you can't, so, yeah. So I, I think maybe if you just give me the bullets now and then table it, we'll.
Yes.
Just in an effort to move this along, Carly, do you feel like you understand the essence of what we were talking about? And could, you guys could collaborate on the bullet points because I think.
Vice Chair Smith, Member Capen, I'd be happy to. I believe that I understand the intent that you want us to pursue. And I will collaborate with Planning Manager Dan Escobal.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
You can just table this to meet after the next case, then that'll be good. And then.
May I hear the motion to table until after the next?
Motion to table this case until after the next case.
Second?
Second.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morando.
Yes.
Commissioner Relind. Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion is passed.
Thank you. We will then proceed to case to New Business B, case 2025-10172, case 4157 and 4161 Walking Rain Road Special Use Permit.
All right. Good to see you again, everyone. So, oh. Right, okay. All right, I will be presenting the second new business item tonight, and that is case number 2025-10172 and 2025-10189, Ramonte del Sol Development Plan Amendment and Special Use Permit at 4157 and 4161 Walking Rain Road. The proposal is for a development plan amendment to include a 20,432 square foot gymnasium, outdoor amenities, parking lot, and a special use permit to allow an educational use in a residentially zoned district. The agent is Colleen Gavin of Jenkins Gavin. The applicant is Charter Schools Development Corporation, Ramonte del Sol. And I am, again, Hall Cruz Haber. The, oh, sorry. Okay, so the location of the area is near, well, this is the South Sorrios Corridor. Over here, we have Governor Miles Road cruising up there north. Then we have access off Beckner Road. The site is right here. And I've highlighted the site on this parcel. We have the Nava Ade subdivision to the north. We have Estancias de las Soleras subdivision to the south. And then we have Vistas de la, de las Sierra's to the east. Was it, yeah, first subdivision. The current zoning, zoning designation, it's two parcels. So the first, where the primary, the existing school is, is on planned residential community. That is the base zone. The reason why it is zoned that way is because this parcel was originally located within the Nava Ade subdivision, in which they were required to dedicate a parcel to a school or for a school. To the south, we have Track 16, and that is zoned R1, and that is where the placement of the proposed expansion of the school will be. This is the future land use designation. Current site is Zone 37, dwelling units per acre. And to the south, it is a public institution for the future land use. Here's the legal lot of record for Track Q1. Here's the legal lot of record for Track 16, right here. Now, it is a development plan amendment because the original development plan for the tract, for the school on Q1 was approved in 2002. And with their proposal, it is on Track 16, which is on a 3.02 acre parcel. As I mentioned, they are proposing, and it's a phased approach. In their first phase, they're, will be providing gymnasium, classrooms, office space, additional parking, outdoor amenities. And Phase 2 will be a 5,200 square foot classroom to replace three portables located on Track 16, as well as a 2,500 square foot addition at the central campus to expand their cafeteria. This is the original development plan approval. Here are the proposed site improvements. You can see a bulk of it is at Track 16 down here. This is the gymnasium location. Outside, there will be including a basketball court. This area will be turf soccer field. And then again, additional parking for faculty and staff. Whereas students will be parking at the existing location. And then I would like to point out the future phases. This area here, where the portable, portable is located, is where that 5,200 square foot structure will be placed in the future. And this area here, it is currently a half-court basketball, and that will be replaced, that will be, yeah, developed at a future phase. These are the proposed elevations, and they, they do represent a contemporary, modern architecture design with the interpretation that it is a traditional Spanish revival. And fortunately, it does blend, or it does match with the existing campus in regard to color and design, as well as it blends with the architectural vernacular in the area. Also, the, they have provided a sign, and that sign has been reviewed and meets our sign requirements in both square footage and height. This is a bit of a breakdown, little close-up of the Track 16, got that 20,432 square foot, 84 additional parking space to the south. And of course, everything else I've mentioned. And a little breakup. Now, they will be providing an exorbitant amount of bicycle parking. I'm very pleased to see. I believe it's at 30, 39 bicycle parking spaces. And this is a floor plan breakdown of that 20,432 square foot. And what's really nice about this is that they are relocating their faculty and staff offices to this portion of the campus, which will act as a new entrance and improving the security of the campus. Prior to that, you would actually have to walk through the courtyard of the school before actually getting to the administrative office where you would sign in as a visitor. And this will increase security immensely. The project has been reviewed, has been transmitted and reviewed by Partimental Review Team. For roads and access, will we review that? They are, still have two access points of Walking Rain Road to the north and are proposing a third access off Las Brisas Road to the south. Now, this access here would be primarily for parents dropping off their students in the morning and buses, who would be accessing the site to drop students off. Originally, buses were parked on-site all the time. With this proposal, they will not be parking buses on-site anymore, so that allows for greater parking. But what, something I did not drive the point in is kind of why, why is Monte del Sol submitting this? Well, through their app, in their plans middle and ENN and pre-applications we had with them, they made it very clear that the students at Monte del Sol, they don't have a gymnasium, so they have to rent space from other schools. They have to rent, they have to go to parks and coordinate that. And when I went there on a site visit, I saw kids, you know, playing soccer in the, in the right of ways. So what this really does is just make the campus a safe place and gives them the amenities that they would need to really further the students' extracurricular activities. The applicant has been reviewed by fire. There are two new fire hydrants placed. The gymnasium will be sprinklered. And the right of way is a 26-foot, 26-foot right of way, which is required for buildings that are 30 feet or taller. The applicant, application has also been sent to Water and Sewer, and they will be, the new gymnasium will be getting their services off Las Brisas. And the site has been transmitted to drainage, where they have two, they have created two drainage ponds at the southwest and west portion of Track 16. The landscaping plan has been approved with conditions, which I will actually get into one later in my presentation. And the lighting plan has been approved. I'm really, I like to bring this up, one up, because in the ENN, there was concern from neighbors about glare and lumen pollution, lumen, light escaping the property. Light, lighting plan does propose light shields for those lights budding or near residentially, residential properties. And there are zero lumens escaping the property based on the approved lighting plan. Lumens is term for light. The architectural style points have been met, as I've mentioned, and, oh, look here, we have 37 bicycle parking spaces provided. And in addition, they've provided 162 vehicular parking spaces, whereas 159 are required. And in that 162, ADA is included in that. They've had an ENN on January 30th. Following that, they duly notified this planning hearing on July 2nd with mail or sent. And the approval criteria for the development plan and special use permit are the same. So, and staff has determined that they have met those requirements as specified in my staff report. This is our, for the development plan, these are a few of the conditions. One of them is that they would have to construct and dedicate, or provide an agreement to construct and dedicate to water. There will be a, there's a requirement for a 15-foot landscape buffer, which I will get into. And those, just a few from other DRT members. And the condition that I like to propose, to revise is condition number four. And this really had to do with, before I read that, I'll kind of get into this. So this portion where a non-residential use abuts a residentially zoned district, whether it's developed or undeveloped, requires a 15-foot landscape buffer. Track 16 was annexed to the city 2005. These portables were permitted by the county in 2004. So these are legal non-conforming structures. And when the applicant will replace these in the future, that is when they will be meeting that 15-foot landscape buffer along this portion of the property here. Currently, it is at nine and a half. And as you can see with this landscape plan, they are proposing trees, so it does add additional screening. Now, the change. Originally, it was that they would have to install an eight-foot fence and maintain a 15-foot landscape buffer along that property. However, and, and that was on, that was contingent on whether Track W, which belongs to Vistas de las Sierra subdivision and is located here, would be deeded to Monte del Sol, because that parcel, similar to this, the original. Monte del Sol parcel to be dedicated for a school. So with that. We've changed the condition, we've talked to landscape and they've approved this. And that the owner shall provide a fifteen foot landscape. Or fifteen foot setback landscape buffer at the northeast portion of track sixteen. When phase construction to replace the existing. Portable one structure begins. So when they submit for a building plan. Now I have my recommendation, staff does. Recommend that the planning commission approve case number two thousand twenty five one zero one seven two. Subject Monte del Sol special use permit, subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections provided in attachment A. Recommended. An attachment A and amend and the amended condition as presented by staff. I'm sure you guys will word that correctly. And then the other is for. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve case number two thousand twenty five one zero one eight nine development plan amendment. Subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections provided attachment A. And the amended conditions as presented by staff. Those are the motions that you may choose, and that is, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I have one question, just a clarification or two. In the journal we circulated, it says the construction is two thousand four hundred and thirty two. And that was twenty, which is it?
That was provided in the staff report. What you're reading?
On the agenda in the description.
Okay. It is twenty thousand four hundred and thirty two, so I would like to clear the record on that. Thank you, Vice Chair. Vice Chair Smith.
And the other is that, and this may be being a novice, we do not have in the agenda, any notification. For case number twenty twenty five one oh one eight nine.
Was that the early neighborhood notification notice or?
Don't mind me, I can't read.
Vice Chair.
And that things are going well.
Vice Chair Smith, don't you worry, that happens to me all the time.
Questions, maybe.
Quick, if you'll go back to the slide that had your updated condition on it real quick. And maybe you explain this, I think. The current version, there's an eight foot fence. And is the suggestion that that is removed? Okay, just wanted to clarify that, so removing the fence and keeping the fifteen foot setback.
Commissioner Kate.
I missed that, yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Smith, I I actually had a similar question, can you explain again why you're removing that eight foot fence?
Yeah. All right, let me go here. Looking back, it it seemed to be an overreach by staff to request that eight foot tall fence. And when I reconvene that condition with landscape. They did not see need for an eight foot fence. As the lance, as the fifteen foot landscape buffer is the only. Landscape requirement for non residential. And residentially for non residential use abutting in undeveloped residentially zone district. So. It just, it was an overreach by staff originally, and that's why we changed it.
So it it my understanding of the provision is you either do fence. Or the landscape buffer, right? No. It's not and or.
Yeah. It's it's the fifteen foot and that's what the landscape engineer made clear to me.
There are no, obviously there aren't, but. For security and safety and maybe the applicants is going to speak to this a little bit in their presentation, so we can move along to that. I guess I'd like to hear about that. You're putting in a lot of effort to make the entryway more secure, which I think is fantastic, so. The question about removing fences around schools at this point is, I'd like to hear about.
I'll defer that, yeah.
And there are other questions, commissioners?
Okay, thank you all.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr.
Sorry, you mentioned. So just north of your area that is in red. It is a lot that, did you say? Can be deeded as a school as well, and I guess my question is. Is there a possibility that in the future that area just north will be like will also be developed?
Yes, so this actually is part of the, let me go all the way back here. Well, okay, give me a sec. Every time, all right, every time I put the laser pointer, it zooms me back out. So this is that tract we're talking about. And if you just key, okay, so you can can see right to the E. That's that tract I'm talking about. That is part of this does the last year. They are currently on there. That tract is supposed to be dedicated to school. In my understanding, and that is through the annexation agreement that that was in place. Now, they are coming in for their third phase development, so at some point. That's got to be dedicated to a school. That answer your question, Commissioner McGee?
I believe it did, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, proceed. Thank you.
Thank you all.
If you raise your right hands, that we can swear you in. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gavin, one thirty Grant Avenue.
Zoe Nelson, one eleven Huddleston Street.
Nine seventy five hundred person.
John, Matt Johnson, forty three East Park.
You solemnly swear declare, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, do so under penalties of perjury? They've been sworn in.
Good evening, and thank you again for the patience with technology. We're going to get this down someday, right? Okay, hello, I am calling Gavin with Jenkins Gavin here on behalf of Monte del Sol Charter School. For our application for an amendment to their existing development plan and a special use permit. So. I know that. Right, thank you, okay. So I just want to introduce quickly our our team, I know it's already been a long evening and you have a lot of cases before you. So here we have Dr. Zoe Nelson, she is the head learner and charter director for Monte del Sol. We also have a Matt Johnson with architecture team and Kelly Klein with our civil engineering team. We also have a representative from our developer, which is twenty two Beacon, previously known as Charter Schools Development Corporation. And so, you know, Hoel did a great job of identifying exactly where the project is, so I don't want to belabor this, but just for clarity. Again, this is the existing tract Q one where the existing school is. And to the south is track sixteen. That is the parcel that was given to the school in two thousand and four. And then annexed into the city in two thousand and five, where currently there are some portable structures there that are utilized for the school programs. And then just our future use map identifying that track sixteen, which really is a subject property of the proposed expansion of the campus. As public institutional, so our proposal is in alignment with the future use plan. So again, just identifying the parcels, I'll go through theirs. And this actually, I think, is a good graphic, just for understanding kind of where we are. Monte del Sol really is kind of the the heart and soul and center. Of this residential neighborhood that is just south of Governor Miles Road, we have Nava Aday to the north. We have Estancia de las Solares is just to the south and to the west, and then we have this is a. De la Sierra, which is currently under development. As Hoel mentioned, they're currently coming in with their phase three subdivision plot. And I will go into that parcel that was kind of touched on earlier. So this is a, I think, a good aerial, just again, for context, you can understand kind of where the school is, obviously, this aerial was taken prior. To some of the current construction that's occurring to the east in Vista de las de la Sierra. You can see here, this is the existing campus coming off of walking rain road. And then this piece here is track sixteen with those six portable structures. And now we're going to zoom in. A little bit more so you can kind of understand again the context and kind of the layout of the existing campus. Again, this is the existing parking lot, this is an existing entry. The interior courtyard. And then again, these are the portables here. And this road here to the south, that is Las Brisas, where we are proposing our. Our third driveway cut to provide to distribute parking, distribute access to the campus. So again, just, there's track sixteen again in an aerial. So touching on just really quickly, the 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 layout of the campus is such that. We really wanted this expansion to really. Blend in and incorporate and be a more of a holistic approach to the campus. So again, we have our existing building and the south campus building is really there to serve the immediate needs of the school. This is a school that is seventh through twelve. They have very competitive soccer and basketball teams. And as was mentioned, they don't have any proper facilities for their students. So as we all know, an educational experience is not just academics, right? It's it's about having a well rounded experience, whether it be athletic, social. The the arts, and so providing this space is not just addressing. Athletic deficiency with the current campus, but providing a heart and soul for the entire school to to gather and have assemblies. To have back to school night, to have performances and to be able to host athletic events for the community. So again, sorry, my. Clicker is going a little too fast here. Again, I just took clarification on the phase two, so yes, so. Phase one of the development plan amendment again is to add the. The twenty nine thousand square foot plus building that will house the gymnasium, new administrative offices, five classrooms. And the, of course, support spaces. And then as well as an outdoor proper sized basketball court. But then in phase two, we wanted to again, address those portables and allow for permanent structures to be placed in that. In the southeast area of the campus. And then allowing for an expansion there on that northwest corner of the. The central campus building. And then this is just identifying again where the proposed development of the property would would occur. Just to zoom into the campus here. And I just want to get to some of the matters that were discussed earlier, and again, our floor plan. This is the administrative offices, this will be the proper entry. Of course, our gymnasium building, classrooms in the orange and then support spaces. And here's our elevations, really touching on and and utilizing the existing color palette that's at the existing campus with tans. And kind of a a a clay color as a pop for our gymnasium massing. This is the existing entry to the campus, and you can see here, this is the logo for. Monte del Sol, which we're utilizing on the new proposed building. And again, there's those colors. So I want to talk real quick about just some clarification on the parking distribution. Basically, the south parking lot that comes off of Las Brisas is not proposed to be utilized by students or parents. The whole point of that was to be able to take the the bus traffic. Away from walking rain because there's a lot of. because there's a lot of traffic coming and going, and really isolate it to this area so that we have very efficient flows of traffic and coming off of Las Prisas. So, really, that south is a staff overflow. Visitor and parents are adjacent to the new structure and that formal entrance and security point. Staff and students then are distributed to the north. Our, I'm not even gonna get into traffic unless you guys want to talk about it because I know it's late, but I do just want to real quickly go to a question about security, here we go. So, securing an educational campus is not necessarily about putting a fence around the entire property. When you have structures, structures in themselves have walls, walls are a sense of security. So, what we are proposing here is actually to take wrought iron eight-foot-high fence and put it between the buildings, as opposed to taking the entire six-plus acres and putting a fence around it. We were taking basically, if you look at this graphic here, you can see these lines here are identifying where fencing is going to occur in the Phase 1 when we're still maintaining those three portables. So, we have fencing here between the central campus building and our new south campus building here. We have fencing here between the existing portables and our new south campus building, and then fencing here to the east and then wrapping around. So, basically, we can secure the entire campus and the area that the students hang out in and utilize to walk from class to class, from building to building, and it's secured as opposed to having feeling, you know, like it's, I mean, I hate to say it, but you know, like somehow you're, you know, imprisoned into a property. It does not feel, what we wanted to do is really incorporate the fencing and be really efficient with that. And then, of course, when we move on to Phase 2 and we can go ahead and proceed with that permanent structure, of course, then we will, you know, update how we maintain that security. And then the question about having a fence along that property line there between that and the parcel, the school parcel that's part of, this is De la Sierra, let me move on to that. So, basically, there is an annexation agreement that the owners of Viscous de la Sierra went into with the city of Santa Fe, and here we go, here's our plat. This is a subdivision plat for Viscous de la Sierra, which is not subject to this proposal or this application. At the time of this approval, this parcel here was identified, tract 3 was identified for to be dedicated to the Santa Fe Public Schools. The reason why it was dedicated there is because it was adjacent to Monte del Sol, it makes sense, right? So, there's an additional three acres that makes sense, it's adjacent, and that way it would allow an existing educational facility to utilize that acreage. So, in the development of Viscous de la Sierra, we have not been involved except for early on with the different phasing, you know, they have a requirement to go ahead and dedicate that. So, it is our hope that that dedication occurs soon, and we would love to incorporate that into our campus. That is another reason why putting a fence or a wall between these two parcels, 16 and this tract 3 makes absolutely no sense. And then furthermore, actually, that wall, to answer, remember, Miranda's question is, in the code, it actually does not require a wall or a landscape buffer, it's just landscaping of team building. So, I think I addressed all of the questions that came up in your questioning of Hoel, but I'm happy to stand for any other questions. And before we end, I'd like to just have Dr. Nelson to say a couple words.
Good evening, Vice Smith and members of the commissioners. My name is Zoe Nelson, and, you know, first of all, I want to share my appreciation with some of our legislators who have supported this capital program in the last couple of years with appropriations up to close to a million dollars. So, that support from the Santa Fe delegation is a huge boon, and I mention that because a couple of years ago, Senator was, we had invited him on to campus, and they walked into the gathering space where we currently hold everything, and and they had a memory of back early in the 2000s of being in that space with the then-governor, and the governor turned to the senator and said, "Let's build these guys a gym." And so, here we are 20 years later, working on building a gym, and I think that's a notable story because, you know, we have been around for 25 years as one of the oldest charter schools in New Mexico, and we have had competitive sports teams, and we've, you know, maintained a really strong community in this space. And when we, when I first started working there in 2010, there was nothing around us except for Nava Aday. And so, I think it's also our time to build up and be part of the community that has built around us over the last decade or so. You know, we have invited some students, and I think they're still here, so you'll get to hear some of their stories, hopefully, also. And I just want to highlight a couple parts of this phase for the, because it's not highlighted in our specific building plans, but the future phase of removing the remaining portables after the first three were to go is an arts building, that would be the plan phase, which is one of our core pillars. And so, to have a 5,200 square foot building there, and then the other building where the current, by the kitchen, we have a commercial kitchen that serves our dual-credit culinary art classes, and so the vision there would actually be to expand that so we could have a teaching kitchen and continue to build that work-based learning program out. I think that's all I have, and I also stand for questions, thank you.
So, I don't have anything else to add, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, time for public comment. There are those who would like to make public comment, and what I say from our earlier presentations is there not a limit we like to honor?
That's up to you, Mr. Chair, if you'd like one minute, two minutes, three minutes, that's completely up to you.
I understood there was a three-minute for general.
You can certainly put that on a timer.
Well, let's not be too militant about it. Here comes trouble.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Armillo, 2410 Cali Loisa.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury.
I do.
They've been sworn in.
Good evening, I'm part of the boys' basketball varsity team, but I'm not here as just an athlete. I'm sorry. But I'm someone who deeply believes in the culture of school, and I want to talk about something that's more than just four walls and a hardwood floor. To us, it's very different. I would say it's just not any gym, but I want it to be our gym. Right now, we practice at public parks, it may sound okay, but it's really not. We practice really late nights, and there's a lot of homeless people around and a lot of needles in the ground. And sometimes we're very scared, but yet we still practice, and we still want to play for our school. We love our school, and it's our home, but we just want to have a home. We spend nearly $20,000 a year just to rent gyms. The gyms we rent out aren't the best, they don't have a lot of accessibility to handicap needs, which leaves a lot of our classmates with disabilities, or even that one parent or grandparent with the disability. So, we want them to watch us grow as we grow. And it's very hard playing home games at a different person's home. In my opinion, it's very embarrassing, and we want to, let's say, make us feel like we want to play at our school. And we're missing more than basketball or any other sport, we're missing opportunity and pride. For athletes like me, sports are more than a game, they're hope, they're an escape, and they're a future. It's one thing that really keeps us going. At the end of the day, it's more than a court, it's a home. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Sobranes, 3991 Camino Juliana.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury? They've been sworn in.
Good evening, Santa Fe Planning Commission, my name is Sarah, I'm a student athlete at Monte del Sol, and I'm here on behalf of the students and athletes of our community here at Monte to speak about some important factors why we need a gym for our community. First, sometimes it's hard for students and parents to go to different locations for practices and games. If locations are changed, or if weather is not acceptable to practice with, constant changing of practice locations can cause issues with participants not being able to get there. Second, having a home-based gym, we will have a safe place to practice and play games at. You would not have to worry about who's around because only the people who are supposed to be there will be allowed to be there during that time. Third, having a home-based gym, we would have a place to promote team-building and skill-building as athletes, PE class would be, would have their own place to work on these skills as well, and not being in a place where other classes may be happy. Lastly, as a student athlete, as a student and athlete, we need a sense of home court advantage. Having a home-based gym, there will be a sense of pride and motivation for players, coaches, and school community to come together for the home of the Dragons. I believe that having a, having our own gym will help our school have a sense of community, pride, and a place to create real team-building experiences. I want to thank you for your consideration of making this dream come true for our community here at Monte.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Alonso Baca, 41 Cali.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury? They've been sworn in.
Hello, my name is Alonso Baca, I am a rising junior at Monte del Sol. These new structures that we are, these new structures that we are hoping to get at this school will be, will help us have the ability to keep a lot more events on campus and hold a lot more people. Additionally, it will also help us to hold more great central events such as clubs without disrupting the older or younger years with their clubs. The gathering space, which is an open-air space, is where we hold a lot of our gatherings and activities, and this new gym we're hoping would be able to alleviate some of that space. This would also give us a better place to hold our mentorship, our mentorship activity or events, because it would provide us with more space to have it, have more people come and appreciate the activities and the mentors that help teach the students. Mentorship is an important thing to us because it helps students see if they want to go into a certain profession, or if they want to do a certain hobby, that they can get good at. We hold it at the Lenzik IIA and our gathering space currently, and with the gym, we're hoping that it would give us more room in our gathering space so more kids can come. When I had first entered Monte del Sol in 7th grade, it was kind of intimidating to be put straight in with the high schoolers, and with this new building, with the four new classrooms, we are hoping to put the 7th graders with the four core classes in there so they won't get thrown immediately in with the high schoolers, so they have some room to breathe and mingle with each other. We will also be getting a field, which is a good thing for us during lunches and little breaks. A lot of students like to play soccer, and our current soccer place is in front of the school where a lot of cars come and go, so it's not really that safe. This field will give us a better and safer place to play soccer and just hang out without having the risk to, without having to move back and forth and be able to fall and not get hurt on the asphalt. The new structures will also give us more security because it would consolidate the area and give teachers a better way to keep an eye, a watchful eye on us so nobody will get hurt and nobody will be in danger, and we'll be able to watch more, we'll be able to watch better of everybody coming on and off the campus. Other than that, it is just, these built, these new structures are something that I know a lot of students at this school really would love to have, and it would, right in the day, because they would have better places to play, better places to have. It would give a lot more students more comfortability and more comfortable environment to be around. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Penzer, 13 Duende.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury? They've been sworn in.
Good evening, members of the planning board, I'm Erica Penzer, the assistant head learner at Monte del Sol Charter School. And aren't our students amazing? I'm here tonight to request your approval for our school to move forward with the permitting phase of our new facility expansion. This project represents more than just additional square. It's about opportunity and our students' future. For 25 years, our charter school has served this community with the outage gymnasium, performance stage, or outdoor athletic facilities. Despite these limitations, our dedicated teachers and resilient students have achieved remarkable success. However, we've reached a point where our physical limitations are constraining our educational potential. Our proposed gym, along with the new outdoor athletic spaces, will finally allow us to offer comprehensive physical education and competitive athletics. Programs that develop teamwork, discipline, and school pride. The new stage will provide a venue for student performances, graduations, and community events that strengthen the bonds between our students, families, and larger community. The additional classrooms and administrative offices will reduce overcrowding and create specialized learning environments that our students deserve. This isn't just about meeting current needs, however. This isn't just about meeting current needs, however. It's about positioning our school to serve future generations effectively. Doctor Zoe Nelson and her team have conducted thorough environmental reviews, engaged with neighboring residents, and designed a facility that complements our school mission and values. This expansion represents a significant investment in our students and families. By approving our request tonight, or um, recommending it to the governing board, you're not just permitting a building project, you're championing educational excellence and community growth. I respectfully urge you to approve our application so that we can move forward with, with the permitting phase. Our students have waited long enough for these essential educational spaces. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Are there any, are there any, uh, people on Zoom or elsewhere who want a moment?
Yes, um, Chief Smith, we have two folks who would like to speak. The first one is Joan Dickerson. Has her hand raised? Joan, you may um, unmute. And please state your name and address for the record and be prepared to be sworn for your call.
Joan Dickerson, uh, forty-seven, twenty-one, Las Plazuelas.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Vince Warren.
Um, we certainly, uh, in, uh, Estancia Estela Solaris want to be good neighbors to Monte del Sol and appreciate the importance of the project. And, uh, e- especially appreciate the, uh, safety aspect of the project and the, the, uh, uh, a- additional classrooms as well as the gymnasium. Uh, we do have some concerns, however, with the ingress and egress of buses, uh, along, uh, Las Brises. And, uh, would like to, uh, know if there are uh, traffic controls that are going to be established at that intersection uh, where Viento del Norte enters to Las Brises, and the driveway, uh, proposed driveway will be entering to Las Brises, uh, because there are traffic problems already along Las Brises. Uh, we have, uh, worked, uh, successfully with Dr. Nelson regarding some parking issues and appreciate her, uh, cooperativeness in, in, uh, working with us and getting students to park in designated spots instead of in our neighborhood. Uh, the last thing, uh, I'd like to mention is that we have existing irrigation along Las Brises. And we, uh, understand that there will be a certain amount of, uh, 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 digging and scarifying of, of substrate before putting on a base, uh, layer and then asphalt for the driveway. And we ask that you coordinate with us so that, oh, we can adjust our irrigation, uh, so that that is not damaged, and that the, um, the irrigation will continue to, uh, water the trees and bushes in our neighborhood. Uh, we spend a lot of money on water and we don't wanna waste it. Um, I can, uh, give my email address uh, to the developers so that they can contact me, and I can contact the, uh, landscapers uh, regarding the irrigation. I serve on the board and I am the board liaison to the landscape committee. If you would like me to state my email address, just, uh, let me know.
Ms. Dickerson, um, I believe that, uh, Dr. Nelson may have your email address, and they're nodding yes, so, uh, I'm sure they understand, um, your request and will follow up.
Okay, we, we certainly would appreciate that so that we can make the, uh, necessary adjustments to the irrigation when that driveway is laid. Thank you. That's all the comments that I have.
Thank you. There was one other hand raised, um, however, that seems to have fallen off. I want to remind folks, if you want to speak, please raise your hand right now. It's not coming back up. Thank you.
Are there any comments or if I'll be ready for the, would be?
May I make a, sorry, may I make a point of inquiry?
Alright.
Um, you can, the public member who commented just now, they had a comment about traffic. We do have our traffic engineer here. But I would like to be, if that needs to be addressed. Leroy, may you come up?
Let me close public comment as we're waiting for Leroy.
Switch. Uh, you. So with respect to traffic in the school, um, the school hired, I believe it was Bohan in Houston, who performed a traffic analysis, uh, that was reviewed by the city's traffic engineering agent, Wilson and Company. The school's population is not growing by these changes. It's, uh, facility expansion, population expansion, so there was no additional traffic impact. Um, we can work with Bohan and, and review their work with respect to access and such. We did look at it all, and it met, it met muster, but as this moves forward, we'll continue to work with the applicant to, and the neighborhoods, which were traffic operates well.
Thank you. Okay, um, are we ready? Do we need two motions? Two motions. So could I hear a motion on case twenty-two-five, one oh one, seven two, forty-one and fifty-seven, fifty-seven and forty-one, sixty-one, walking rain road, or a special use permit?
Here's my.
Yes.
Yes, uh, I'd, uh, like to make a motion, uh, in, uh, case, uh, twen, do I have to make them separately, or can I make?
No, we need to.
Yeah, okay. Um, in, uh, in case, uh, twenty-two-five, ten, one, seventy-two, forty-one, fifty-seven, and forty-one, sixty-one, walking rain road special use permit. Motion of, of approval of the case as submitted with all technical corrections uh, from staff.
There's a second. Second in. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Caden? Commissioner McReynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Chair Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Mayor Smith, the motion is passed.
You and Mr. Miranda.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, I'd like to make a motion in case twenty-two-five, ten, eighteen-nine, at forty-one, fifty-seven, and forty-one, sixty-one, walking rain road development plan amendment. Um, I'd like to make a motion for approval as submitted with all technical corrections from staff.
There's a second.
Second.
End it? Please call her all.
Commissioner Caden?
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Chair Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Mayor Smith, the motion is passed.
Motion is approved, and you got your program. Um, I was just gonna ask, it's been two hours, would people like, like a five-minute break? I just, I just bought the, the most expensive peanut butter cups in the world. Whoop.
To go with?
They are, they're.
Okay, can we call the meeting back to order, please? And, uh, can the conversations in the back of the room, uh, cease? Maybe not. I'll call the meeting back to order. Um, do we have a report? On the, we had, had a motion to postpone, so I will ask that the motion, uh, the case of, um, twenty-two-five, ten, seven oh six, hundred St. Michael's Drive master plan amendment be raised again for, um, to hear the report for the amended motion.
Chair, um, I don't know if you need to have a vote to take it off of the table before we can start discussing it.
Nope. Think we, vote to take it off the table?
You'll need a motion and a second and then.
Separate motion? My God, where are we? Okay, may I hear a motion to take it off the table?
I make a motion to bring back case twenty-two-five, one zero, seven zero six, six hundred St. Michael's Drive master plan amendment referred and adjusted.
Second.
Second. Let's call her all.
Commissioner Miranda?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Reland? Commissioner Caden?
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Chair Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Smith, the motion is passed.
You. Now, do we have to make the motion again, or what is the order in front of the mission?
This point, I think it's best if, um, we report back to you the, um, results of the, um, response to a condition regarding facade articulation.
Alright.
And, um, this was put together by the applicants, the Midtown team, as well as, um, Dan Eskebell reviewed it as, as in his role as planning manager. And I have reviewed it also, um, in my role as line judge director and support this. So for this, the standard is all building facades exceeding three stories and facing a public street shall incorporate articulation at regular intervals of the building facade to enhance the pedestrian experience and soften architectural massing within the streetscape. Methods of articulation include, but are not limited to, recesses or projections on the building wall plane, changes in material, color, or texture, roofline variations or parapet offsets, balconies, roof decks, and step backs.
What is the, I'm, by now out of gas in terms of what the appropriate motion would be, but Commissioner Miranda, I'm sure you are not. Or Commissioner McGee?
Thank, thank you, Chair Smith. Um, in, uh, in case.
In, uh, in case, I would like to make a motion in case twenty twenty-five ten, seven, zero, six, at sixteen hundred St. Michael's Drive, uh, Master Plan Amendment, I'd like to make a motion with approval with, uh, with, with, with additional inclusions and corrections from staff, including.
That would be to recommend the governing body approve the master plan amendment subject to the new condition as recommended by the land use director.
So be it.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to recommend that the, or the motion would be for the governing body to, uh, recommend approval subject to adding condition. And, yeah. All right.
Second.
More discussion. Yes.
I just want to say thank you. I think that was really well crafted and captured what we were talking about, so. Nice work. Thank you.
I second that. Thank you.
Then maybe we hear the roll call.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Reland. Commissioner Caden.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds. Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Cloud.
Yes.
With that, Chair Smith, the motion is passed.
Good evening, Chair Smith, Commissioners. Uh, I am, uh, talking about case twenty twenty-five, one, zero, zero, three, seven, which is eleven, eleven Okate Road Development Plan. The applicant requests approval of approximately one hundred nineteen thousand five hundred and forty square feet of new construction for affordable multifamily housing on five point six four acres. The site is Zone C two, general commercial. The agent is liaison planning applicant Santa Fe Civic Housing Authority, case planner Claudia Cath. So this is a vicinity map that shows, just get the laser pointer. So here's, um, Cerrios, here's the site. This is Airport Road Jaguar, there's Okate and, uh, Los Solares. This is a slightly more zoomed in image of the site. There's an auto dealership here, an auto dealership here, the Walmart. This is Mobile Home Park. This is vacant land owned by School for the Deaf. It's the high school. This is a zoning map. You can see here's the site in the gray is primarily is, um, C two. The, uh, dark orange is the Mobile Home Park. And the lighter orange is the planned residential communities. Then these are multifamily developments. This one is currently under construction and this will be coming in for a development plan. These are photos of the site. The site is currently vacant. There are two, uh, abandoned buildings on the site, so this is one of the abandoned buildings. This is Okate. This is a view onto the site. This is a view off of the site. This is a view looking west in the other abandoned building. This, uh, rendered site plan showing, uh, here's Okate Road. You enter, you can enter at this driveway or at this driveway. There's parking along the perimeter and covered garages. This is building A, which is the largest. This is building B, smaller, a community building. And then there's, um, uh, two tot lots, one for younger children, one for older children. A grass area, rain garden and pond, another pond and another pond. There's perimeter screening, street trees, uh, street trees, uh, along the roadway. Required, for this development, the required parking is a hundred and thirty spaces and the applicant is, uh, exceeding that with a hundred and forty-two. Five of those are ADA, are required to be ADA requirement. The applicant's providing eight. Four ADA van spaces are required. The applicant is providing four. All parking is, uh, standard, uh, for standard cars at ninety degrees. And wheel stops will be provided per code at every parking space. Um, for this development, size development, twelve bicycle parking spaces are required. The, you can see in red, the applicant has eight bicycle locations with at least four for at each location, so they're upward of thirty spaces provided. Okay. Uh, also on here, I just wanted to show the garage parking, that the purple is the standard, um, parking and the blue is the ADA parking and there are two covered ADA spaces provided. As part of the development plan, the applicant is providing onsite improvements. Um, this is currently the intersection of Okate and Cerrios. So right now you can make a right in, a right out, you can turn left, you can turn left this way, turn left this way. Uh, we, the applicant will be providing, um, uh, more traffic calming devices where you can only turn right in, turn right out. There can be no left turn anymore. There's a signal down here at Los Solares where, uh, someone would have to go down here and make a U-turn and then could go north. Uh, one of, one of the, um, international, uh, building code requirements is that there has to be an accessible path of travel from the door of the development to public transportation. So there's a bus stop right here. And after discussions with the D R T team, uh, our recommended preferred option would be to just have a sidewalk along the north side of Okate Road. And then there's an existing crosswalk at Cerrios where someone could cross safely and then, uh, go to the bus stop. So there, uh, this is the way it looks right now, uh, looking north along Okate. And this is what it would look like with a sidewalk. There is in the code, uh, chapter twenty-three one, seven, that the Public Works Director can request the property owners along Okate to build a sidewalk on their property. So that the applicant is not tasked with five hundred feet or so of concrete. So, um, that is one option. It's in the code. However, if that did not, um, does not come to fruition, the applicant would have to, um, construct that sidewalk. It's a condition of approval. There is another option proposed by the M P O that there could be, um, a shorter distance of concrete, uh, sidewalk installed and then a mid-block crossing because there is an existing sidewalk on the south side of Okate. So, um, and then they could access the public transportation. So this is the existing condition again. And here would be a shorter sidewalk and then a mid-block crossing. So, um, you see merits to both, uh, staff. Thinks the sidewalk just on the north side is preferred, but this is also a viable option. And we would like input from the Planning Commission. And moving on, these are utilities. The dash lines, uh, represent existing utilities. So there's an existing water line in Okate. Uh, there's an existing sewer line in Okate, so both, um, the water will run around on, under the Loop Road and stub out to the buildings. The sewer will come up through the center and stub out to the buildings. Both are eight inch. The lighting, um, there's two lights, types of lights proposed, a pole downlight and, um, uh, wall pack downlight. So the wall packs you can see will outline the buildings and the pole lights are shown as, are as shown. Um, the applicant has a little tuning up to do on the, um, photometric plan, but, um, that I'm sure that will happen before recordation. Then these, um, are just elevations of the architecture, so the side of the building would be facing the interior garden area. This would be facing the Loop Road. Uh, this would be facing, uh, Okate and this would be facing the, uh, north side of the project. And that's building A. And then this is building B, smaller. So again, this would be facing the interior. This would be facing the Loop Road. And then, um, it may have these switched, but this would be the, looking towards Okate and this would be the north side. And then this is the community building. And these are elevations showing the garage, the ends, the back. So the applicant conducted an E N N meeting on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Y N was held virtually. City staff and the applicant's team and no members of the public were present. The recommendation is the Land Use Department recommends development plan approval of case twenty twenty-five, one, zero, zero, three, seven, eleven, eleven, Okate Road, subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections as outlined in attachments A and B of the staff report. One motion will be required in, in this case, approve or deny case twenty twenty-five, one, zero, zero, three, seven, eleven, eleven, Okate Road Development Plan, subject to conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report and technical corrections listed in attachments A and B, um, on staff report. And I stand for questions.
Just, uh, when you said a hundred and nineteen thousand square feet, you were talking about the entire lot as opposed to the eighty thousand four ninety-one that will be constructed.
And I should mention the applicant complies with all the setbacks. The lot coverage is less than sixty percent and the building height is under forty-five feet or in C two district.
Are there questions, members of the commission? Yes.
I just have one question, uh, to orient. Um, so you mentioned there is, there was a big orange section that I think is future residential development. Do you know what that is? Is that Tierra Contenta?
Let me get back to the zoning plan.
Yeah, right here.
This is vacant land.
Oh, I thought you said it was like future.
Uh, this is Rancho Santa Fe, these two developments. This one's under construction. This is going to be coming in as an application. This is the high school.
A planned, sorry, I can't, planned something community.
Planned residential.
Yeah, I was just curious if we knew what it was since it seemed like it's already been planned.
So here it is, vacant, vacant and high school.
Other questions?
Just a quick question regarding the options one and two for the sidewalks. Um, so option one would be, is option two only covered into play if, if landowners refuse to participate in option one? Or are you asking for?
Um, we're looking for feedback from the Planning Commission, really, and, um, whether option one or two, um, is preferred. So option one, there's no crossing. I mean, there's already an, an existing crosswalk at Cerrios. It's an anticipated stop when you're driving. There's, on the other hand, option two, you know, takes advantage of the existing sidewalk on the south side of the road and tasks the applicant with a much less amount of, um, sidewalk.
So if I'm understanding correctly, an option one, basically a governing body can require that all of those landowners build the sidewalk?
Or? The Public Works Director.
Okay, Public Works. And then if they refuse, then the applicant has to pay for it? I guess I.
So, um, I could use some assistance on this.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
I guess, guess I don't understand the, the ordinance maybe that, you know, you can submit a notice of violation to the owners of those parcels. And then they can decide, I guess, either to comply with that notice of violation or not, and then the applicant would have to pay for it? So I think so.
So, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the commission, if there's a requirement of, of the city code and we have inspectors, the normal course of operation is they're going to give them a, first, you know, in some, on a case like this, I would admit, I would venture to say that they would give them a letter to address what, what's going on. Then they'd give them a certain amount of time to address the issues. Then it would become a notice of violation. If they still maintain status quo, then it becomes a citation that ends up in court.
Okay. I guess just my personal input on option one or two would be option one, because it is a stop. Option two, you have people coming down a street. Unless there's like more established crosswalk.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Um, so the, the challenge here is that this road was once part of the county. So originally when it was developed out, and I think that's Newman's Nursery, um, that when that was developed, it was part of the county and no sidewalk was required at that time. The Subaru Honda dealership that's to the south, this part of the city was developed as part of this, when it was part of the city. And so that's why the sidewalk was constructed. Typically, what we're wrestling with here is typically we require, um, you know, those connections to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act as well as just providing for safe passage for residents to transit or, you know, um, mostly to that transit corridor as well as Cerrios Road and other services. Uh, we would require for a typical residential development that they build that sidewalk. And we are within our right to do so as offsite in improvements. Um, but this is a one hundred percent affordable housing project, so staff has been really trying to work um, with the bottom line. It's a bit challenging and so we're offering some options that potentially could help the applicant.
Commissioner Piven.
Just to follow up, I think you mentioned this, is there an option for a more developed crosswalk? Like one of the speed tables that has the crosswalk with the lights next to it, like that's on Guadalupe? Where as a happy medium, just so that it's such a straight, long road. I get it and I think it's a good solution, but I would be worried about especially if someone is moving slowly or in a wheelchair or something like getting across there enough. So would that be an option as a happy medium?
I'd like to see for it as to Laborary Pacheco, our traffic engineer.
Sure.
So a, the answer to your question is. We follow, that's an engineering apparatus. And would require an engineer by state law to stamp such a crossing. And the process for that, because it's not at a controlled intersection, it's simpler at a controlled intersection because it's stopped or signalized, those are somewhat no brainer. But uncontrolled crossings can be safer. In other words, letting a pedestrian choose where to cross based on where they're going and volume, speed. Sometimes the choice with an, using an uncontrolled crossing is actually safer than a controlled crossing. It raises liability. And when you're telling a pedestrian, here's the crossing, cross here. And if the engineering work behind that, traffic study, pedestrian counts, et cetera, there's a whole matrix you go through. It can be challenging and so you have to be careful. The answer is yes, but it's, it would require an engineering study. And as I looked at the exhibit, it seems to be that there's an overflow parking lot on the north side of. Click on that. That is probably serving the dealership. It looks like it's an overflow parking based on ownership for the. So one option would be to really ask for that entity to study that, I mean, are they needing a crossing? You know, is this at 80 feet of missing sidewalk, potentially something they should be doing? And, you know, it's unfortunate had they come in through the process and we've been asking those questions prior to that existing. We would have required that, we'd have required that owner to do the study, post, probably post-operation study. Is this a place to cross them and fill in that missing 80 feet? Because that's the attributable to their development. It's an impact that they're creating. And so it's, we were in a challenging position because, you know, as the land use director mentioned, we're looking at the situation. The the need for this is there, but we're in the sort of like, well, how do we attribute it? And how do we get this done? So that's where there's two options. And I think there's even this third category of possibility that was mentioned from chapter 23. So it's a, you know, it's a conversation we have, but I think that just putting a crossing and picking it out of the blue might not be to our best advantage. Might, you know, we can continue to talk about it, but we would want to, an engineer to stamp and say, yeah, this is where we want the crossing and it's going to be safe.
So. I asked a follow up. Yeah. Am I understanding correct then the option two is not your first choice for this project? The shorter crossing across the street at a random place?
No, I wouldn't say that that is my, my, I see the logic of the existing sidewalk on the south side of the street.
Yeah.
Which is great. My only comment might be, well, where we put the crossing? And is it warranted by the matrix of volume, speeds and actual users in these peak hour timeframes? Of the choice that an engineer would make to say, okay, we're going to need, or to leave it uncontrolled. And a, you know, a person might be crossing to Newman's, a person might be crossing to the parking lot, a person might be going further. So forcing crossers to a certain point without the traffic study may not be the best place. I don't know where to put the crossing. I don't know where the pedestrian traffic is, and this is going to generate new pedestrian traffic. I've been in conversations with the applicants, saying, well, our, most of our people are going to actually go the other way to the school, probably. So, so I'm just saying it's, it's a great gap of hidden sidewalk as soon as you can. There's 80 feet missing. I think it's very generous of the MPO to have thrown that in. I would just say I'm not so sure about the marked versus uncontrolled.
Can you just clarify, uncontrolled means unmarked?
Yeah.
So just leave that as, it doesn't sound like that's an option, right?
Well, it's, it's the, it's how the world is. Most of the places as you're going along a street provide you an opportunity to cross. And even, I'm thinking of perhaps Alameda near De Fori Street. There, there is a marked crossing closer to Serio. Well, there's one at the intersection of St. Francis. Then there's a mid-block marked crossing. But there are actually ADA cuts various further along the street on both sides for. And you may not, if you're able-bodied, you can almost cross wherever you feel safest. But if you're not able-bodied, there are opportunities to cross beyond just those marked crossings. There are ADA ramps that kind of gets you closer to intersections that provide opportunities. Unmarked or uncontrolled, I mean, unmarked.
Okay.
We're in the position of advising, is this something, let me just ask, that you would like when the motion is made? Will include a recommendation around the crossing in the sidewalk? Or is it just advice?
Mr. Yes, Chair. And members of the commission, one of the things that we have to consider is this is an ADA requirement that was already provided to us by, by our technical review division and our ADA expert. So it isn't something that we can just simply avoid. And it is an obligation of the applicant who's developing today. So there is an option by which we can pursue possible requirements of adjoining property owners to build their own sidewalks. You know, that could go through several iterations, it could go to court. I mean, we don't know what that's going to do. On the other side of the story, it's still an obligation, an obligation as a direct result of our ADA compliance requirement. So that they can hit that bus station, especially if you have somebody on a wheelchair, you don't want them running on that. You don't want them going on that street. You don't know who's going to rent those apartments. And if they're in a wheelchair, there should be a safe place for them to travel to get to the bus station. So, you know, if we go with option one, if we give the option to go towards those neighbors, there still has to be an obligatory requirement that requires financial guarantees. So in the event we hit a wall, we're going to have to build that, they're going to have to build that sidewalk.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, my question is, has the applicant indicated that building this sidewalk would be a major hardship? And might impact the building of this development? And I guess secondly, if the answer is yes, are there other options that the city has around funding? To support, I mean, we're talking about affordable housing. So I think we are all very much in, well, I won't say that. But I mean, it's, it seems like a great project, but I'm curious if, if A or B are our only options? Or if there are other things that we can explore here?
Chair. See, that's a good point. I think that these are two generous options, or two options that came from the MPO review. And they make sense. And I mean, they're, they're, their goal is understandable. I think it was brought up in Claudia's presentation that there's also the chapter 23 possibility, which is, is in the code, chapter 23, there's the ability for. And typically developers build our, our infrastructure. And that chapter is typically used when sidewalks are falling apart and they're unsafe. The public works department needs to cite old existing neighborhoods. And you've seen it around town where they're asking people to go in and fix 40, 50 year old sidewalk. It's not typical that you kind of maybe miss that overflow parking lot. But that would be something that could be, I mean, thought of or talked about as it's outside of these options. Is there a possibility that, I think it's, is it Nissan? Whatever this company is that built this overflow lot, he approached and explained that, you know, there's this missing 80. So that's, it's not option one or two, that's another possibility. And I think with respect to the applicant and their attributable impact, it would be, I would say legitimate to request that post-construction, post-buildout, maybe as an engineer, I would say you'd be required to tell us what, do a pedestrian traffic study. So we know what your pedestrian impact is to this street. Because we're kind of guessing, like if the pedestrians are heading to the other way to the school and I don't know what the, what the data would tell us. So I think that would be attributable and fair to say to this applicant that, you know, once it's an existing condition, we'd like a follow-up traffic study, pedestrian impact study for the street. That would be a thought, I don't want to change anybody's wording. I don't know, I haven't mentioned that, I don't know how they'd react to that. With respect to getting the 80 feet, that seems like a logical, smaller piece because then it addresses ADA. You know, and then they're required, anyone doing anything is required to follow ADA law, it's federal law. So that is almost like a non-debatable point. But the ADA law is very specific as what, how that needs to be met. And it's, it doesn't necessarily dictate certain elements. It doesn't dictate, it's slope, cross slope, permeable, solid path, but it doesn't give you exactly what that needs to be. It doesn't, it's not, it's not technically sidewalk, ADA sidewalk. Because as you know, we live in a world where they don't exist in some streets just based on the age. So I think they don't have, they have no choice but to follow ADA because that's federal law. And that criteria is a little bit different than the specifics that might be in.
So I'm, I'm asking specifically, has the developer indicated that this, that it would be a hardship to build up to Serios? And, and would that impact the development of this project if that was a requirement? Because I think if the answer is yes, then, then it feels like we have a more concrete like conversation. But I don't know if we've been told that the answer is yes.
They do their presentation, we'll probably continue the conversation.
Mr. Chair. Just for clarification, there's, there's 80 feet that was discussed. But the length between the edge of the property to the area that needs to be accommodated by ADA access is about 800 feet. I just need you to understand that value.
Let me, let me understand this before we go to the next presenter, we want the next presenter. There's the 80 feet, there's then the 720 remaining feet. Then you cross the road to the bus station. Or is there's the 80 feet and you cross the road to the sidewalk and walk, and walk to the bus stop?
Affirmative.
So you got to cross the road either way. Right?
That's affirmative.
The question, and there's a sidewalk on one side and there isn't on the other. The one way you're talking about 800 feet and the other way you're talking about 80 feet and creating a crosswalk.
That's correct.
Chair Smith, I want to ask two quick questions, staff. Does the 20% rule come into play here, I'm assuming, on ADA improvement? Set the financial threshold to 20% of the project?
I would have to defer that to. You, you, hold on a second, let me think about this. You're talking about 20% of the project's value?
Yeah, you're limited in ADA, total ADA improvement on the side of 20% of the total project. Now, I get that's a lot of money, but. That's an avenue I believe that's open to you. But I guess the other question. Well, I'm just going to hear from the app, yeah.
We, we also have Leah Yeney, who is with the MPO that has raised her hand. Would you like for her to contribute?
Briefly, and then I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Let's go ahead, Leah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to point out one thing about the mid-block crossing is that one advantage that hasn't been discussed. And maybe you were alluding to it, that there's a crossing either way to get to the bus stop. But the, the crossing at the mid-block is about 25 feet versus at Serios, about 50 feet. So I, I think that there could be some real safety advantages to doing it there, especially if safety, proven safety countermeasures are taken, such as a raised crosswalk signage. There are lots of established strategies to make sure that a mid-block crossing is in fact safe. Thank you, that's it.
We are preparing for more testimony.
Good evening. Hello. Got it. Hello?
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Dolores Viehle, P O Box 1835, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87504.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
She's being sworn.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dolores Viehle, I'm with Liaison Planning Services and I represent the applicant, Santa Fe Civic Housing Authority. We're excited to present to you Okate Apartments in a 100% affordable housing apartment complex. Our team of experts have worked diligently to produce a project that is not, that not only meets development review requirements, but also provides housing with amenities for those in need, specifically families with children. As you can see, the 5.6 acre site is well-suited for multifamily development and is located near transit and commercial services to the east on Serios Road. The commercial corridor has public transit located within a quarter mile, as well as a grocery store, pharmacy, banks, restaurants and retail establishments. The impact of the development in the community will be well-received. Multifamily development is a permitted use within the zoning standards of this site. The city of Santa Fe is in a critical need for additional affordable family housing. And this development will contribute to the solution of the affordable housing crisis. Project description, the project is comprised of three buildings situated on 5.6 acres. See, can you see that? Okay, zoom in. Situated on 5.6 acres, Buildings A, B, and a community building situated on the north side of Okate Road. Building A will be a mix of three to four stories and will have one, two and three bedroom apartments. Building B will primarily, will be primarily three stories with one and two bedroom apartments. The community building to be utilized by residents, staff, which includes community room, leasing office, manager's office, computer. room, leasing office, manager's office, computer area, community space, and a community kitchen. Okay. The community, okay, here we go. Um, here we go. In addition to many of the amenities that are proposed, there will be a children's playground, multi-purpose playing field, communal open space, covered parking garages, walking trails, The buildings are setback from Okate Road, which will minimize impact to the roadway. Two access points allowing traffic to flow in and out of the property will ease, with ease are proposed. We can't zoom in. Let's see, turnarounds and access for emergency vehicles and parking for visitors will be provided at the entrance of the property. Internal crosswalks will be provided at crucial crossing points. A six-foot broad iron gate will be provided along property lines surrounding the entire property. Landscaping that meets city standards is proposed throughout the site and maintained by a timed drip system. It's important to note that we have taken the surrounding properties into consideration, primarily the mobile home park to the west. We provided buffers with garages along the western lot line and provided parking that faces the apartments and not the manufactured home park. Lighting will be shielded and will meet the code requirements which will minimize light pollution in the neighborhood. As you can see on these elevations, architectural points, height, mass, massing and colors meet the standards and elements within the code. Uh, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Ed Romero. He'd like to do a brief presentation to the commission. Thank you. And then I'll, I will end with a conclusion and I'll address the rest of the conditions that we discussed earlier.
Your name and address for the record.
Ed Romero.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury? You've been sworn.
First off, I want to thank the city staff working on the project. I, I think that Dan never wants to see me do another project again because I spend all my time calling him and saying, okay, but what if? Um, because it seems like all our projects have to squeeze, uh, to get in. Our last project was Resalana four years ago. It's the last project that the city has seen, uh, built, brand-new construction. And the terrible problems there weren't the ADA access. We got ADA access pretty easily, but we had a heck of a neighborhood. So this time we turned around and said, okay, well, what if we looked at, you know, a little bit further out, but in a growing market that, that is a fantastic place to live, I believe, because you can walk to Walmart, you can walk to the hospital, you can walk to so many other things. But the plant, the problem with that is it really hasn't developed to make it feel or to, to make it fit into issues like an ADA process. Um, obviously, we, we want to take care of all of our residents, particularly our ADA people. Um, and, and we've been exploring ideas, uh, as to how to get there. One of the ideas we did is we came in for a CBT grant this background and asked if we opened up, uh, Hernandez Road. Because in my mind, it's not the people going to Cereus Road that are, that are the issue. It's the kids between the, uh, the, uh, the complex, the trailer park and us that are going to make their way to the school. But we looked at that and that's, that's an idea that we'd still like to explore. But right now, our biggest problem is time. You know, when, when, when things get delayed, it creates havoc within our projects. I've got, you know, probably eight different partners in this deal, my construction loan, my contractors, my, and it, and it stretches out because it, it goes to your subs, goes to everybody that's involved in this project. Well, what if it gets delayed another three months or six months? And what happens with all the things that are happening in the world right now? Um, so I've got to keep them all calm and moving forward. Um, I think the question that came from the staff was, is this vital to the project? I think my biggest issue right now would be, I think the, I read was that we would have to commit and build these crosswalks before we got this platted. Um, my, my answer is I'd like to look at the three options. Maybe the sidewalk on, on the north side of the road, the eight hundred feet or whatever that is, is the best option for the project. We have some problems because it obviously makes, makes us pay for something that somebody else owes. But on the other hand, I don't want to, to put a position Newman's Nursery, I mean, they've been there forever. Is it right for us to put such a tax on an entity like that? I, I, I'm in the crossroads on what is the right answer? Is it, is the right answer going through Hernandez? Is the right answer going down this path and, and asking those people to participate? And is, and the easy answer is give us the crosswalk. That buys us some time while we figure out where we're going everywhere else. But more importantly, get me through the zoning process. We've been doing this deal, these deals for twelve years, thirteen years. We've got fourteen in behind us. We're not going anywhere. Um, if we get through zoning, we're going to find a way to find the funding to make any one of these three options. But I think it's too early to make us pick one of the three, um, or the two, one of the two that is being looked at. But we'd like to explore that third, which we think, you know, we take a sidewalk up to the, uh, up to the trailer park and then we take a crosswalk and we get people out to behind, uh, um, uh, Walmarts, which also has a handicap, uh, uh, bus stop and other stuff going that way. So that, that's an idea that we'd like to explore, but we'd like to explore it while we have a, a deal that's alive. And, and right now, um, my, my project is, is sucking air because I don't know that I can keep this thing together long enough and to keep all my funders together long enough to get that going. But I hope I answered your question. It's not super vital, but we'd like to make the right decision on how to get these people out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Um, let's. So we all know what those, the conditions are of approval are and, and the issues that we face. So we understand that the need for ADA routes, which we provided internally, sidewalks and safe crosswalks, we feel are very important, requiring off-site improvements without studies may be premature. We would like to offer a remedy by paying our fair share. The current system of adding sidewalks like patchwork as developments happen on Okate Road does not work because, A, there is no ultimate plan for Okate Road. The sidewalks are set by curb and gutter and lane width. The need for right-of-way acquisition is dependent on the roadway section. Again, unknown. Also, we prefer, we have prepared a cost estimate for options provided. I think this is important for you to know what it will cost to have these, um, improvements done. The cost estimates are option one, sidewalk to Cereus Road, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That doesn't include acquiring property to, um, put in the sidewalk. Option two, hundred foot sidewalk to crosswork, crosswalk. Um, it says a hundred foot, but we know what that is, thirty-eight thousand. According to the city code, the owner of the property adjunct to the roadway, roadway is responsible for construction and maintenance of the sidewalk. The city has several mechanisms, as we've discussed, to require the owners of the properties or the city to build the necessary improvements determined by the Public Works Director. The city also has an impact fee ordinance and the funds of these types, for these types of improvements, which we hadn't discussed. We ask that the commission reconsider conditions one, two, and seven and take into consideration the need for affordable housing projects such as this. Also, I'd like to point out that these conditions, um, as stated on the staff report, mention that these improvements would have to happen prior to recordation. I don't know about you, but having someone put in off-site improvements to something that hasn't even been recorded is almost impossible. We can't even get a building permit. In conclusion, multifamily construction in Santa Fe is comprised of mostly market-rate apartments, as we all know, leaving low-income residents with few options. Within the primary market area, projected increases in population and households bode well for demand for Okate Apartments. Approximately fifty-seven percent of renter households in the primary market area earn less than fifty thousand dollars annually, indicating a strong need for affordable housing in this area. This concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time and we hope that we can, uh, figure out how we can get this approved. We stand for questions.
Other question, yes. Commissioner Kibon.
Um, right, the right way to say or ask this, but this feels like an incredibly peculiar thing to ask the commission to weigh in on. Um, in a, in a advisory way or something about which decision to make. It seems, um, there needs to be access, there needs to be ADA access. We're hearing that the crossing the street, I mean, I wish that was a viable option because thirty-eight thousand dollars is better than a hundred thousand dollars, but like, I just feel, I feel awkward about the position we're being asked to be put in. Um, hold on one second, let me just finish my thought and then I'm happy to hear. Um, I think the, the question was asked whether or not there is any mechanism in our city's affordable housing, uh, department or something to help support the cost of this. It's a hundred thousand dollars is a lot, but it's not a million dollars. Um, and so is there a partnership with the city's affordable housing program or the state's affordable housing program that can help with this? I don't think it's good neighborly, uh, approach or to try to put this on Newman's Nursery in some kind of violation and, uh, using that mechanism does not feel like a good precedent to bring in here. It seems a little out of, uh, not, not the intended use of that. And else? Sorry, I'm just saying all the things, I'm getting kind of tired, but, um, yeah, I, this feels peculiar and like it's not quite worked out enough in a way for us to be in the position we're being put into.
Dan?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So the reason the options are there is you have two departments, two divisions that are making recommendations. So, uh, as the landings department, we accommodate both of them as we present both of them. Um, as you've heard today, one option is going to be a lot more difficult than the other option and the other option is going to be a lot more expensive than the more difficult one. The problem is, is it has to happen. It isn't, it isn't something that we can just not let go. It's, it's, it's a fundamental requirement that the city has to meet in order to address those ADA requirements. All developments suffer the same problem when you come to underdeveloped roads and that's how the city grows. The city grows by development. And unfortunately, this is one of those times where you have a really good development that is going to have a much higher expense in order to address the needs to develop on the property that they've chose in order to meet their requirements and the city requirements. This means that as Commissioner Miranda identified, that you have that 20% rule. Well, when you look at the cost of development based on the application they submitted and the development fees that we waived for them, but it will not exceed that 20%. However, that price is high and they do have a limited amount of funds because they're in that position. So the best thing I can offer at this point in time is that they, we've, we, they meet the condition. Now, it's not about the construction. That was basically a requirement that meant for them to place on the plans prior to recordation that was taken literal and it wasn't something that we actually expect somebody to go out and build it first before we actually record the plans. That's kind of silly. However, uh, we could try and postpone some of these actions by requiring them to bond for it until we can, to see if we can find alternative solutions that may be amenable for everybody. But in the event we can't, unfortunately, that condition has to be met. And we can include that as part of that bonding mechanism so that they can record their development plan and we can start talking about how to fix it. And we can do that administratively and we can, you know, we can work with the MPO, we can work with the traffic division and we can work with the applicant to try and mitigate those impacts so that we can achieve everybody's goals, at least try to achieve them.
I ask a question. If we did what you just said, and so they were able to bond, which of these solutions would be the timeliest in terms of what the earlier testimony said was the time pressure under which they, they are operating that will cost them the entire project and they have to go back and refinance everything? Which, which solves their problem?
If I'm not mistaken, and perhaps Ed can come back up to the podium, but I heard Ed say that he needs the approval so that he can solidify the process. What we're talking about are the details in order to go for the construction.
I have a question, Commissioner Clow.
Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me.
I haven't said one word all night.
I know, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I just, I didn't recognize your voice and the cameras are off.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Um, the question, I'm, I'm really confused. So, and you know, I agree with, um, Commissioner, um, Payton that it's, what you presented is really confusing, um, in terms of there's this option, that option, and what do you guys think about it? Is the MPO, which is usually more stricter than the city, is saying they're okay with option two? My question is, is the city okay with option two? Because I can't really understand what the city's necessarily saying about that we have to comply with, um, the ADA, but does, I mean, does option two not comply with ADA? It's confusing.
Chair Smith, um, and Chair Clow, the, the issue is that there is not agreement amongst the engineering community whether somebody would stamp the plan. The option here though, that is being presented as something that, that can be done, the details have to be worked out. I mean, certainly other parts of town, we have speed humps, we have raised crosswalks and the like. Um, but what I think Mr. Pacheco is communicating is that, um, there has been concern raised by the traffic engineer for the applicant about doing such a mid-block crossing. And, you know, it just, you're right in terms of being put into this position, my apologies, but we're really trying to come up with some sort of innovative solution for the applicant. Um, you know, the overall project cost is going to be eight million dollars, so it does not meet that threshold for 20%. And one of the things that the commission could do, if that's the pleasure of the commission, is say they must comply with the ADA standard for an accessible route. Go find how to do that.
And then that it, then the staff and the applicant would work that out?
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
And it could be option one or it could be option two?
Yes, whatever is compliant with Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay. So I think the, the problem is we don't have all the information we need to be able to make a final decision on that so we can just do it generally by saying that they need to comply with the ADA on that, on that issue. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair Clow.
Okay. I think we should move on and do that. And that's all I have.
So I, I like the idea Dan brought up. Um, I think, you know, we're more interested in spending our money wisely than we are in terms of spending it less. What I would propose is that we bond at the higher number, the hundred and fifty-five, get this through contingent on us doing the Get this through contingent on us doing the study of the midwalk and whether that makes sense, and/or continuing down to explore the, the Hernandez thing, which I believe is the best solution. We, we, a problem with spending money off, off campus, but we also have a problem with not making our sites as safe as possible for our children and our, and our families. So, yes, we'd be prepared to bond tomorrow if you guys, uh, if, if that was a, an idea that needed to be handled.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Kibon.
I know, I don't know if we have more to talk about in that direction towards Cereus, but we haven't even really started talking about the other direction. And, I mean, you're bringing up that, but we haven't really talked about, I guess, both. Um, this, first of all, the project is great. I just want to say that out loud. I'm, I'm excited about it. It looks really good. But you do have an issue of where it's located, where like, it's being developed for families with that intention. And there's two schools off this way that we haven't talked about, connect, like, safe connectivity for kids that way. And we have connectivity here. Um, and going to Hernandez Road is a great idea for, or is it, is the road down there? Seo del Sol, or is that the one Hernandez? Okay. But also preventing people from getting to restaurants and the whole Cereus corridor isn't ideal either. Like picking one or the other. It's not a great position to be in, but we haven't really even, what, what are you, what is the connectivity right now from the property to the area of the schools? Like, how would kids get to school from there? There's capital in Nina Tarot, right?
I learned a lot in listening to the director. I hadn't really spoken with him at all about this, but in the traffic impact study, there is a discussion of kind of impending future development. As he alluded to, this is a very dynamic area that's under kind of intense energy for development. And that's, I think that the issue with this, the way the conditions that are, were raised as being sort of questionable. ADA is a given, it's federal law, no one has a choice. Um, but the way the timing of those other conditions were written is the problem. So in other words, I don't think anyone's opposing the ultimate goal laid out by the MPO and the city and Public Works. We share the same goal of safety and connectivity. But because it's so dynamic, it's hard to, to force the issue without, you know, without knowing what's going on. Um, I know that the, the approved development on the south, I guess if you, well, there's a there's one development waiting for Hernandez Road, which would not only from a Sorry, I don't know if you dragged.
While you're plugging that in, if we were to do what the director suggested, could not this all be looked at as opposed to from ten forty-five to eleven? Right? So, let's not have a conversation about something that we've already agreed there might be a solution which will then allow for the best solution to come up. If that makes. Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I think, like, it'd be one thing if we could not see a path for them meeting ADA from right away to in terms of the school. Uh, uh, one thing, just what the code requires is one connection to public transportation, and it doesn't necessarily specify like, like no, 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 I, I get it, I'm not there yet. Um, not there yet. So, there are more constraints on that. But in terms of paths that make sense to the community, that doesn't necessarily be a side, need to be a sidebar, that could be act by pressure fine.
Okay, but can we, but can we agree that we have, excuse me, Commissioner? Excuse me, can we agree that there is a path forward, and we can vote it, and the conversation will occur that will, will address the issues that have been raised? Yeah, so do we need to continue discussing them amongst ourselves? I'm just, okay, yes, Commissioner. Uh, and
The existing, the existing are all those footpaths you see that lead to behind the football field, obviously from the, from the existing residential area. There's an apartment complex, Tera Quinteta Road South, and Ereta hasn't been connected to Ocate. But when that land develops and it's discussed a bit in the TIA, those improvements will, will be made by that developer.
Okay.
So there's a lot going on in that area where these improvements will be addressed. So we all share the ideals that have been brought up in these conditions. I think what Dolores alluded to was is the timing. The idea that it needs to be done prior to recordation is problematic. And if those could be, that language could be tweaked so that the you know, what they're doing, they can agree to future bonding, making the best solution work without getting into the weeds of which one it is. That would probably be best.
Okay. So, um, how do we frame the motion that needs to be made that would public comment? Is there anyone on the Zoom that's nearby?
Anyone in the room that would, would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium.
Aaron Boar, seventeen thirteen D, Montano Street, San Antonio, Mexico.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under penalties of perjury?
Do, see, thanks. I just, you know, in respect to the conversation about the bus stop, just spitballing here, but why don't we just put the bus stop in front of the developer? The MTA figure out how to get the bus. Sounds like there's a lot of development going that way. It would really save a lot.
Add that to the motion. Okay, so let me now ask the question, Director Lamboy. If we approve, um, the, the case as it is, as it is presented to us, does that include the notion that we can proceed with the bond and look at all the alternatives after recordation?
Chair Smith, the, um, condition itself reflected the need to update the drawings prior to recordation, so it doesn't have anything to do with the construction. So that's, that's maybe, it's not written clearly enough, but that is the condition. So, um, the planning commission may consider the motion being that, um, there should be, um, Americans with, with access provided that comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act standards, um, to well, I don't want to say Cereus Road in particular, but, but an accessible route should be provided to a transportation board. Something like. And that conditions and the numbers, one, first seven cannot apply. Which, which are those conditions that, um, deal with the different options? One, two, and seven, okay. That those, those, um, have been removed, and you're replacing it with that.
Mr. Chair?
Um, so I have kind of a rudimentary condition. Uh, the applicant shall include, as part of the financial guarantee funding to construct an ADA-compliant path from the property to Cereus Road. The applicant, the applicant, together with the city, shall explore all alternatives for ADA compliance.
Is that acceptable?
I apologize. Can you say that one more time?
The applicant shall include, as part of the financial guarantee, funding to construct an ADA-compliant path from the property to Cereus Road. The applicant, together with the city, shall explore all alternatives um, to comply with ADA requirements.
Good question for the applicant. Have you had any conversations with Newman's? Seeing since they are a very old Santa Fe family, and we're doing, you have not. Thank you for answering that. I'd like to make a motion to approve case twenty twenty-five, one zero zero three seven with the amendment of items number one, two, and seven presented by city staff, and replace it with the applicant and city staff will work together to find an ADA-compliant access to community services and transportation, and a bond will be set up in time by the applicant to cover any expenses incurred with access for public.
Second. Move to roll call.
Yeah, the, uh, oh, please call the roll.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Reland.
Yes.
Commissioner Kibon.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion is, it's passed.
Well, down to one. You are welcome. Thank you. We now have, um, E and F, we're, we'll require two motions, I was thinking. Case twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine oh one, twenty-seven sixty-eight, Agua Fría rezoning. Um, with, uh, Mr. Coaseber.
My brain is hurting.
Yes, sir. Waiting for this to load up, and we'll go as fast as a planner can. All right. Okay. The final case tonight is case number two thousand twenty-four, eight nine zero one, and eight nine zero two, at two seven six eight, Agua Fría. And it is for a rezone and master plan. The applicant, the agent is Jenkins Gavin, the applicant is Cold Water Development Fund, QOZF LLC. And the request is to rezone four point one two acre property from mixed use to C two and request a site plan, uh, with a hundred and thirty unit mixed-use community. The general location of the site is east of Sylar Road and Agua Fría intersection. And it is adjacent to the Sierra Mesa Industrial Plaza to the west. There are other multifamily developments in the area, including Homewise, Sylar Yard Apartments, Seki Lofts, and Boylan Lofts. Uh, the legal lot of record, the, um, planning commission approved in April two thousand twenty-four a certificate of compliance for this parcel as legal lot. It is located in the Trails and River Archaeological District. Oh, let's skip that. Um, again, the current zoning is mixed use. This is the site. It does a but industrial, light industrial and heavy industrial to the south and west with residential, uh, and C two zoning to the north and east as well. The future land use map designates the property here as transitional mixed use. So, it does, um, meet the requirements or general uh, general description for C two, and, yeah, they are symbiotic with each other. These are street photos for the site. And I will go into more in depth about the proposal. So there are three buildings consisting of one two-story and two, um, two-three-story structures, sixty-one thousand seven hundred ninety square feet. There are, they are proposing one hundred and sixty parking spaces, which is part of a parking reduction request I'll get into. The open space, they have met those requirements for two hundred and fifty square, two hundred and fifty square foot per dwelling unit. And there is a, uh, a forty-two-foot easement to the south of the parcel, as shown here, that I will get into. And they are proposing thirteen affordable housing units, which is ten percent of one hundred and thirty, and five percent will be a fee in lieu. Uh, I Again, this is a rendering, uh, just a colored rendering of the sites. This is the forty-two-foot easement, um, that the MPO has conditioned, um, and if this is ever to be developed, they, these six parking spaces would have to be removed. One of them is ADA, removed and relocated, or removed, sorry, the ADA would have to be relocated. Um, and that is also included in their parking reduction request. Um, so that would bring it to one hundred and fifty-four, that's completed. And for the parking reduction request, the required parking for the site is a hundred and eighty-five units. Um, so they are requesting a sub, uh, subtraction of thirty-one spaces to that one hundred and fifty-four if that easement's created. And this is a breakdown of, you know, potential parking reduction based on the square footage of units, which is how parking calculations are determined. And the parking study was completed by Bohannon Huston, and they used the Institute Transportation of Engineers Sixth Edition to create their parking demand study for the site, which they've determined they would only need one hundred and twenty-three spaces. Now, staff has reviewed their parking reduction request and concur with their results and um, agree to their parking reduction. Start diving in deep into this potential, this forty-two-foot easement. So currently, what's proposed to make up the forty-two easement is a dog park, um, which if this is reload, if this is removed, um, they would still meet their open space requirements. Uh, it was conditioned by MPO for the idea of connecting this Isaiah Lane to Cook's Road here, but it is all dependent on if this parcel ever sells, and the city would acquire. Again, the application has been submitted. Again, the application has been submitted to DR2, to our departmental review team, and they provided the various conditions of approval and technical corrections for this project, which are shown in attachment of your staff report. As for the dimensional and density standards, one of the big reason why they are the applicant is proposing to go from mixed use to C2 is to allow for greater density. Now, in mixed use buildings of 25 feet or less in height, they shall not exceed a minimum of 12 dwelling units per acre. And from 25 to 35 feet in height, they shall not exceed 14 dwelling units per acre. Whereas in C2, there aren't any restrictions for density. There was an ENN held on January 24th and April 23rd for this project. The public notice for this was duly notified. They have sent notices 300 feet to property owners and then have sent certified mail to property owners for the 100 feet. This project was postponed at the June 5th public hearing and is reconvened here. So they did not have to send letters to applicants notifying of the new public hearing. The approval criteria for the rezon and master plan have been met as determined by the findings by staff. And the recommendation for staff, from staff, is that the planning commission recommend the governing body approve case number 2024-8901 for the rezon, only for the rezon, and you would be approving the master plan. Or that, thank you. You have two recommendations tonight to the governing body for recommending these. Staff, yeah, we recommend that you recommend approval to the governing body for both of these cases. Are the motions? Are there any questions? Okay, I will let the applicant go. Your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Jenkins, 130 grand.
You shall only declare and affirm that the testimony you have referenced this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Chair Cloud, Vice Chair Smith. I'm Jennifer Jenkins. I am here this evening regarding proposed multifamily community at 2768 Aguafria Street. I'm also joined by Edman with our who's behind me here. So I'm gonna try to get through this with some speed and efficiency. I'll try to just touch on, touch on the height, because I think Hoel just rounding out our team, civil engineering, provided by Civil Design Group and Traffic Transportation Plan provided by Houston, and we do have our consultants on Zoom. So we are here this evening to, with basically three requests, requesting to rezone the subject property from C2 to C2. We're requesting a master plan approval for 130-unit multifamily community that's also a mixed use community. We have small commercial, neighborhood commercial component that is incorporated in the project as well. And then, as Hoel mentioned, we did prepare a parking demand study that is supportive of a reduction in the required parking on the site. And the parking demand study, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is really part of the master plan approval. I'm not sure that really requires a separate motion, but that is, you know, embedded in part of the master plan. So this is the 4.12 acre subject property. We are located south of Aguafria Street. We are just east of Siler Road intersection at Siler and Aguafria. And existing conditions, as you can see here with the topographic contours, the property is gently sloped. It's undeveloped and it is eminently appropriate for development. You can see we have an existing trunk sewer line that traverses the property across the north part of the property. And we also have a sewer line and water line across the road at our southwest corner. There's also a water line. Excellent access to utility and roadway. So future land use map, we are transitional mixed use, which is supportive of the requested C2 zoning. And the zoning map, so this neighborhood, I'm gonna venture guess that it's one of the most diverse neighborhoods we have in Santa Fe relative to mix of land uses. One of the things our general plan touches on a lot is it's about mix of housing types and a mix of uses in all neighborhoods. The general plan is not encouraging of the neighborhood just being one. Really want to create that different use of housing types and mix of land. This neighborhood nails it absolutely. So this is just a few things we highlighted. This neighborhood has evolved a lot over the years. And I'm kind of starting up here on the north side of Aguafria. We have the Aseki Lofts Residential Multifamily Community that was completed a few years ago. So we've seen more multifamily housing being developed in this corridor down kind of its side. Siler Yard Community, really exciting affordable housing project that is on Siler Road. So kind of pathway in between, we have a new opportunity to create housing in this, in this corridor. We have a lot of variety of residential densities from, it's a big density multifamily, more traditional suburban style, single-family development. We also have restaurants and we have tons of employment and we have services. And this is a, actually a walkable neighborhood. So we think it's a great place for new housing and really great place for affordable. So this is the proposed site plan of the neighborhood. We will have our primary access off Aguafria Street. And, and then we have down at Cook's Road, that is going to be reserved just for emergency vehicles. That'll be gated for emergency vehicles only, but there will be a pedestrian gate there. So pedestrians can, you know, get out there and get over to Siler. They want to, you know, taking their bike over to Javah Joe's or something. Kind of a more direct access to get to Siler. So I've rotated the image just so we can zoom in on it. So now Aguafria is on the left side of the page. That's the north side of the property. So we have our access drive. This little element here is our neighborhood commercial element. We're look, maybe it's going to be a coffee shop, maybe it'll be some sort of studio space. That is to be determined, but we really wanted to incorporate kind of a small neighborhood commercial component there. And then we have a driveline that runs across our east boundary. This, our first building here, this is a two-story building. And we received some feedback when we went through our two neighborhood meetings that the experience on Aguafria is, is more of a single-story and two-story experience as far, as far as that street scape goes. So we wanted to honor that. And so our, our, our front building, as you enter, is a, is a two-story building. And then we have our next building behind, which is a residential building with an interior courtyard. And then the, the parking lot kind of wraps around kind of in this S curve. And then we have our largest two-story building here, also with an interior courtyard. And then at the back, we have our amenity space. So that's our clubhouse and our proposed pool. And, and as Hoel mentioned, we dedicating the easement would commit at some point in the future connections from Isaiah Lane to our east over to Cook's Road. So we, we don't want to just leave that area empty. So we want to utilize it because, I mean, it could be 20 years from now. Who knows when, when that is ever going to get constructed? So we're going to make good use of it. And, and so if that is ever constructed, we, there would be six parking spaces that, you know, would get removed. But we are providing 160 parking spaces with this plan. And and then this would be our emergency access right here in South, South. And so, you know, amenities are going to be, you know, include again clubhouse, outdoors, outdoor recreational space. Also going to have lounge space, fitness, and, you know, all of those kind of elements that we come to expect in our whole family. And most importantly, 10% affordable housing, so 13 of those units inside. So this just goes into the kind of the specifics on the project or unit mix. We have a pretty diverse unit mix. We're, we're providing everything from studios up to three-bedroom homes, which we really like that. So we're really able to serve a lot of different type, you know, members of our community, different family sizes and different needs. And so we are compliant with the open space. And then again, with parking, we have a 185 spaces that are required. And in addition to the parking reduction, we're also doing what we call a shared parking. So we have five spaces that are required for commercial. And so, and obviously the, the uses are at different times of day. The commercial is going to be busier during the day and the residential peak demand is in the evening. And so there's an opportunity for, for shared parking in that. So peak demand analysis addresses not only requested parking reduction, but also a shared. So these are just some of the high points regarding the rationale for the parking reduction. And I think those of you who've been involved in the code rewrite for the city's land development code know that in phase two, parking is, is going to be a significant element. And it's going to be revisited because we are not in step with national trends. Because what our code does now is it's an inducement to car ownership. And so there is so much data and academic study about what these more kind of outdated parking requirements and the impact those have on our environment and on the built environment and walkability. And so, interestingly, Institution of Transportation Engineers, the ITE. The IT is the institute that establishes traffic generation data. So whenever we do a traffic study, we don't just get to decide how much traffic a project generates. We're like, oh, it's going to generate this. No, there's national standards that we access in order, so all traffic studies are done in accordance with these same standards. They also have standards. So in looking at the IT standards for parking, says this project would require 123 spaces. We're providing 160. We have a lot of multimodal transit opportunities. We are on Route One of the Santa Fe Trails Bus Line. We have a lot of bikeways. And the Santa Fe River Trail is just around the corner. And it's an easy walk accessible off of Siler. And so we have, and, and we have sidewalks. Again, a lot of multimodal opportunities in this neighborhood. And also looking at this particular census tract, we have high rates of zero vehicle ownership in this particular census tract and low rates of renter households with that have more than two vehicles. And also the city of Santa Fe has multiple studies and plans that really speak to having appropriate parking provisions and not over providing parking. They touch on in the general plan. I mean, there, I have a list. Want to, you want to know, I can read them all out to you, but many plans and policies developed by the city over the last. And one of the parking management strategies that we'll be employing, and I, and this is also becoming a very common national trend, is to unbundle cost of parking. So if you have a car, you pay a little extra in order to park at the community. You don't have a car, your rent is less. So we are not, so it creates more equity and it also supports affordability. So when you unbundle that, then it really can create opportunities. Go, you know what? I'm living here and my, my job's over here. And you know what? I got the bus right here. Maybe I don't, maybe I don't need a car. And my living expenses are going to go in a lot of different ways if I, if I don't. So the parking management strategy around unbundling those costs is really crazy. So this just shows from a multimodal, everything, the kind of the colors that you hear, the yellow and the orange and the blue. Those are all bikeways designated bikeways by the city of Santa Fe. We have Route One of Santa Fe Trails along Aguafria Street. You can see we have bus stops east and west within an easy five-minute walk. And then just across the street, we have our river trail that takes you all the way into, all the way into downtown. And this was something that I thought was really compelling. Why introducing housing in this neighborhood and in these types of neighborhoods is so beneficial? Is that there are over 2,000 jobs within a 20-minute walk. It's probably 2,000 jobs. And this shows the walk shut. So, so that is, because this is a, this is the Siler Rufina Nexus area, right? This is a really dynamic part of town. Lot of interesting things going on. We have a lot of nonprofit organizations. We have a lot of makers make Santa Fe down the street. And they are doing amazing things in this community. So this is a, it's in a rapidly evolving, really dynamic part of town. And so we love the idea of, of creating more housing opportunities that is so close to so much. We did conduct a traffic study. I'll touch on that really quickly. These are the intersections that we analyze. Starting at the east, we did Harrison and Aguafria. We did our site access. Siler Park Lane in Aguafria. Siler and Aguafria, and then Siler Park Lane and Siler. So Siler, it's that little. And all three of those. So with respect to the trip, trip generation, how many vehicles will be generated by the project? As established by the ITE, it shows here that we in the morning, we have 15 cars coming in, 48 cars leaving. In the evening, we have 48 cars entering and 28 cars exiting. So when we do a traffic study, is based upon intersection. And it's, and how they function is determined by a level of service. And it's a function of how much delay does a driver experience at that intersection? There are different standards for signalized intersections like Aguafria and Siler than there are for unsignalized. And so it's, it's like a grading system. You have a level of service A. You have, your delay is less than 10 seconds. You're just cruising through that intersection. Great level of service. And then it goes all the way down to an F, which means that a particular intersection is failing. And there needs to be some sort of mitigation. Maybe you need to construct another turn lane. Or maybe the signal timing needs to be adjusted or whatever else it may be. So these are our levels of service. Aguafria and Siler, we, overall, that intersection operates as a level service C. In this urban environment with these two significant roadways, that is fantastic. It's really great level of service. And then we go down here to our unsignalized intersections. And unsignalized intersections, they really look at individual turning movements. Eastbound left, westbound right, whatever you're doing. So as you can see here, everything So as you can see here, everything in the in the AM, and this is after this project is constructed. We take that trip generation I just showed you. After we counted the cars at those intersections, we added our traffic on top. And this is the level of service we get in what we call the build condition after this project occupied. So in the morning, we have A, Bs and Cs. And in the evening, again, A, Bs and Cs. So the roadway network will continue to to function really well after this project is constructed. And with that, I would be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you very much.
Yes.
So I just have a quick question about parking. Definitely support reductions in parking in order to make more space for housing. I'm curious, I noticed that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you have 12 bicycle parking spaces, but you're reducing parking spots recommended down by 31. Is there a reason you're not increasing bicycle parking to encourage individuals to bike instead?
One of the elements that isn't reflected here because we're still at a fairly, you know, conceptual level with the master plan is in addition to the exterior parking, we're also looking at an interior bicycle storage element that would be incorporated. So when you come back with our development plan, we will have more detail on the on all those particulars. Yeah. But I don't disagree with you that I think beefing up the bicycle parking is a great idea.
Would just add to the what you're saying, there's so many people on electric bikes.
Yeah.
So at this point, and that that's a great area for that.
It is.
While getting on the river trail is doable, it's like, oh, you know, and there's just so many electric bikes moving around. So seeing something that had like a protected.
It's more secure.
With electric in it where they could charge.
We could charge. Absolutely. Yes.
This is actually a question staff. He's basing her analysis on the future plan, his master plan. Do you find as staff that that's suitable considering that we're reviewing this before that's even been adopted by the city? Analysis. You based her numbers based upon the future. What I'm trying to do with the city asking for us to prove that, but that is not that adopted by us. So from a staff standpoint, do you feel that that is acceptable?
Chair Smith, Commissioner Relent, the we certainly are heading in that direction, but it has to be vetted publicly. And so that's a reason that she's asking for that exception to the rule. But certainly we can we can state that that is an aspiration, but we've done the analysis based on the current code.
Please raise your right hand. State your name and address for the record. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury? Please proceed. Like that.
I'm watching you. My name is Brian Witt, which you heard. I'm part owner of Capital Scrap Metals and we're surrounding quite a bit of this property that's being proposed. The proposal changes property from mixed use to commercial needs to have the brakes pumped just a little bit. Some considerations need to be made. Back in the day when mixed use designation was made, it was for the purpose of developing properties so the city could accomplish its goals of infilling unused properties. The goal was to transition from housing to industrial. The property that is being discussed this evening is the extreme examples of the difficulties of infilling. And the pole, because what we have is two polar opposites. We have housing on the Harrison side of this development. There's two commercial buildings. Behind that, there is three houses. On the Cooks Road side, there is Capital Scrap Metals, which is a heavy industrial scrap metal business. The difficulty transitioning is what is being proposed today is the exact opposite, extreme in the opposite. The proposal that is being proposed is an apartment complex and a monster complex, three story. That that does not serve the purpose of blending the two sides. It takes it to the extreme. The argument is that yes, the property does and should be developed, but with a much more reasonable use of the property. To maximize the to maximize the potential to blend from the housing side to the industrial side. The property should stick to the misuse designation. I would also like the commissioners to consider some of the negative effects of the apartment complex. The first thing is traffic. There appears to be, there was two proposed exits from the complex. Tonight, she did mention that the Cooks Road side was going to be used as an emergency. I will acknowledge that. The other side is Agua Fria, which is already a very congested road. So my suspicion is the traffic will not exit, will exit the complex and go up to Harrison or Los Cieneguita and use those roads as a way out because crossing Agua Fria during the day is virtually impossible. The Cooks Road exit is also very difficult. The street is a very narrow, unmaintained by the city street. So the combination of people trying to get to Capital Scrap Metals to to sell their recyclable materials also on their street, the auto mechanics, body shops, towing services with very limited parking. They have a tendency to park in the street, which essentially reduces the street to a one lane street. Very difficult to get in and out. Secondly, the size of the monster complex appears to take away the privacy on the residential side, all the way from the immediate neighbors to all the way to the Harrison side because it's three stories high. It appears to me that it'll make it very, they will be able to look directly into their homes, their backyards, et cetera. Lastly, I would like to discuss the damaging effects a monster apartment complex does to the property values of all the surrounding properties, whether it's the housing side or the industrial side. This kind of monster, highly dense flight complex has to and will damage property values. My third and final point is Capital Scrap Metals is one year away from being in its 50 year, 50th year of business. We are six months away from being in its 40th year at the Cooks Lane location. During this time, hundreds and hundreds of millions of pounds of recycled materials have gone through our little place. The net effect, the net effect of this is that it has had a positive impact on things like landfill diversion, convenience for people to recycle properly and to keep encourage people to keep tidy properties and reduce urban clutter. Also, the whole time, everybody received money for their efforts to do this. Which makes me very confident to state in the last 50 years, Capital Scrap Metals has been one of the most, one of the top 10 businesses, positive impact on this community. The reason I am bringing up this point is because I wanted to on the record very clearly that we've been there a long time and we were there first. Having been there 40 years and our contributions, what I'm trying lost my spot. Back in 84, when we were moving to this location, we were encouraged and pushed towards this section of town to open our scrapyard. What I am saying that is I want it on the record, clearly stated, however, it has to be done, that we have been there a long time and there is negative aspects of living next to a scrapyard. I acknowledge that. But they are choosing to open up an apartment complex next to us. We are not opening a scrapyard next to any housing projects. That is a very important point, and I think it should be addressed. Thank you, commissioners, and you all have a good evening.
Please raise your right hand. State your name and address for the record.
Brian Gutierrez, 7625 Baca Lane.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please proceed.
I'd like to thank you commissioners, Chair Clow, Chair Smith, all of you here for both your service to the community and letting me speak so late. I'll make it quick. I have a few things I'd like to address. So we're in a, we're in a new world of AI. And if you Google mixed use zoning city of Santa Fe, this is what comes up. In Santa Fe, mixed use zoning districts allow for a combination of residential, commercial, and sometimes industrial uses within the same area, promoting a more efficient use of land and fostering vibrant, walkable neighborhoods. Districts are designed to control sprawl, encourage affordable housing, economic development, and promote alternative transportation methods. So as what we've heard from the C2 zoning to this mixed use, they're marrying each other. The only difference is really density. I want to take my hat off to the last project where they not only were 100% affordable, but they were also cognizant of the neighbors that they were impacting. I don't think this project's doing such a good job thinking about the neighborhood. I'm going to just read some things I've highlighted from the staff report and in your packet, guys. And I just want to, I'm going to make some comments. I really want to make it quick, but I want to get my point across. So stick with me for just a few more minutes. I know it's late. So this is under project analysis according to the future land use map, future land use. The property is designated as transitional mixed use. City's official zoning map designates the property as mixed use. Those are one in the same. It's where it should be in the future. Land use map is where it is now. The code requires that the rezonings be consistent with applicable policies of a 1999 general plan, including the future land use map. It is, it's mixed use. It is, it complies with that. This is general pound policy B D three. There shall be infield development at all densities that support construction of affordable housing and a designated mix of land uses that provide an adequate, sorry, it's the inadequate balance of service, retail, and employment opportunities. This project is 70,000 square feet. I don't remember off the top of my head. 2% is going to be commercial or something else. Everything else is housing. You got 1,400 or 1,650 square feet of retail in this project. So when you go back to what's in this general plan, it doesn't, they don't mix. It's off. The master plan, I'm on the master plan. The master plan includes a pool, clubhouse, courtyard, playground, dog park, well bicycle parking spaces, and 185 vehicular parking spaces. I'm wondering that if you guys approve this past master plan tonight, it's approved with 185 spaces and they're asking for 154 spaces. 160 has been mentioned, but we know six are disappearing if they move the connection. So I just find a little bit of a discrepancy in that. And then I'm going to hit a little bit on parking, parking and loading requirements table. Parking requirements, the project is required to provide 185 spaces. However, the applicant submitted a parking demand study proposing a reduction of parking down to six, down 16.76% or 31 parking spaces. Commissioners, you're sitting here and you are interpreting also go with the code. And I know we're talking about studies and less parking. However, it hasn't been codified and I don't think it's something that you have much leeway to go with. I mean, it's just my opinion on that. The zoning approval criteria. And so number one, was there a mistake in original zoning? No. Number two, there had, this is criteria from the city. There has been a change in the surrounding area altering the character of the neighborhood to such an extent as to justify the change to changing the zoning. What was mentioned was one in, which is, I'm not sure which project that is, but I know that everything on the Agua Fria side of this is would fit in a mixed used zoning. It's under 35 feet and they're all two stories, everything that's in this property. So there's been, okay. And so the response was the area has gradually densified over the years, resulting in a diverse neighborhood of suburban residential development patterns, multifamily. But this, and this is the applicant's response. This is what really gets me. The most significant and relevant change is a housing shortage that Santa Fe is currently facing. You go back up real quick to the criteria. It says, has there been a change in the surrounding area altering the character or neighborhood of to such an extent as to justify changing the rezoning applicant's response? The most significant and relevant change is the housing shortage that Santa Fe is currently facing. So answering that with the change, I don't think really drives. And staff, staff also mentioned, I mentioned this before, change in the surrounding area, the the home wise condominiums, idler yards and seculars. Please, this is, this is another one of the criteria. It's in number three. This is a response to C2 zoning designation would allow for additional housing density than the current mixed use zoning. Additionally, the C2 designation allows for additional flexibility in the terms of building form. In this, in this case, the building form would be C2 zoning for height and for and for extra density. And programming that the mixed use zoning doesn't. But it said both components better support the general pound theme, both components. So the mixed use in the C2 zoning. So I touched on it before, but here's a big one in criteria in three, the rezoning is consistent, applicable policies, including the general plan and future land use map. It says the project enhances the mixed use environment of the environment of the Agua Fria corridor. And so it's all housing. There's not little stores in this project. There's not something that enhances the mixed use environment on that.
If you can, keep going here.
I am, I am.
You may lose this in a minute.
No, no, I'm with you. So criterion six, unless the proposed change is consistent with the applicable general plan policies, the planning commission, the governing bodies shall not recommend or approve any rezoning, the practical effect of which is allows users to change character significantly different from or inconsistent with the prevailing use and character area. And this, it does. And even more so on top of this, the applicant did not directly address this criterion. This wasn't addressed by the applicant about the changing the significant area from what's in there. So I guess in, in conclusion. In conclusion, when you look at this area. And you see what's on Aguafria and you see there's two story buildings. There there've been bit, uh, everything that they've referenced has been sitting on vacant land. Nothing's a demolition remodel. Um, this doesn't fit in this area. This is a little too much for this area. Of what it is, the parking, like I say, it's doesn't meet code. There's just a lot of inconsistencies in this application. That I think that the commission should recommend denial for the rezoning. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
You, are there participants on the Zoom who want to participate?
Our chair. Participants have their hands raised.
Suppose the public. And are there? Questions of anybody or members of the commission? Yes.
I'm, I'm curious, and I may have missed this, but what uh, level of density does mixed use zoning allow?
Chairs, we have. Here's Commissioners and Commissioner McGee. So mixed use is a little unusual. If you have a two story structure up to twenty five feet, you're entitled to twelve units per acre. And if you have three stories up thirty five feet. It's really hard to get three stories in thirty five feet, but um, you're entitled to fourteen units per acre. So it's, it's very unique within the code that the density is based upon. It's kind of a.
And what is the proposed density for this project in particular? How many units per acre?
Double square.
Mr. Chair.
Thirty.
I also want to add.
Yeah.
I want to add to the mixed don't, the mixed use zoning density characteristics. Because with mixed use, you have to have a percentage of residential and a percentage of commercial. So it's not all one hundred percent when you have commercials. It's sixty forty split. Your, your density is. Is kind of limited with a mixed use as opposed to a C two district where there is no density. It's all performance based.
Any questions? Yes.
Is, uh. Chair, um, I'm curious if there are concerns at all about the heavy metal yard next door. If I, I think I saw it come up in multiple of the E N N comments, and so um. I'm just wondering where we are with that now.
Absolutely. We are, we are very aware of of our of our neighboring activities. And so um, respect. But we um, spent a lot of time working on the site plan. So on the our kind of our our common boundary with Capital Scrap. I love scrap. I have a whole box of recyclable. City won't take. Take the capital scrap. It's a lot. My favorite place. Um, so, um, but our common boundary with them is is a parking. So we have moved and and pushed that residential building at that end of the site away from our west boundary, just to create a proper buffer. And we also have opportunity with a very nice wall there to, you know, just deal with it. And and one of the kind of, I guess there's a good thing about it is Capital Scrap is busy during the day. The quiet use at night. So that's one of the, I think, the beauties of when we talk about real mixed use is you activity. Um, peak hours of activity tend to to um, differentiated. And so when you live next to commercial areas, like I said, they're quiet at night when there's a lot more activity. Sedential. So when we get into the final design and get into the development plan, we're looking at what are those other kind of measures or opportunities we need to do? To be, you know, respectful of our context. It's an unusual context. We absolutely acknowledge that. But it is, it is something that we we feel confident that we we can, um, we can address. And we'll have an opportunity to talk more about that stage.
So and then I think maybe one final question. So you mentioned, um, when I ask about the twelve bike. Parking spots, you mentioned you're exploring internal.
Interior.
Interior.
Mm hmm.
Um, should I assume that a resident would need to pay for that bike parking in order to access it?
For interior, typically, it's, it would be, it would be a little bit of an extra fee, amenity fee. Yes, anything outside would not be, you know, would not, would that just be free? And so um, I think it's a good idea that we look at increasing the outdoor. In addition to, uh, in addition to the interior storage.
I agree, especially if we're also including affordable housing. We don't want to both say you can't have a parking spot. You, you, you have very limited bike parking unless you pay for it. It just doesn't seem to make sense.
So I would be willing to um, to offer that we would um, double the exterior parking from twelve to twenty four spaces. And I I would accept that as a condition of approval.
Other questions? And I hear a motion. Yes, Commissioner.
It's a question, more of a statement, the unbundling of parking. Um, which I understand it is an interesting idea and happens in more denser urban areas. Um, I think it can inadvertently penalize um, certain people that really need cars. Um, families, kids, folks that are not super mobile. Um, and in the study, I feel like I learned a lot in that study.
It's a real, isn't it? I know. It's really good read. Yeah.
But it seemed like there were two ways um, that they proposed framing it. It was like, uh, what did I say here? Like. Not increase, like the rents are the rents. And you.
If you don't have a car, you have.
Yeah.
Discount.
But you're not getting penalized above, not penalized, but having to have an additional thing. While I love the vision of Santa Fe being more um.
Old modal.
Yeah, we're not, we're not quite there yet, and that area is not quite there yet. And I think realistically, a lot of people, you know, in order to live and work and. Move around Santa Fe are need to have cars. So I'd just like you to consider that as far as. That model of unbundling seems.
Totally agree. I think there's some refinement, you know, it is sort of a new area. We're.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, with with projects, like I said, unbundling, if, you know, you shouldn't, um, but I think. The messaging and optics around that.
Yep.
It's important.
Yeah. Um, and then. Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that. Increase or decrease in rental fees as a result of not having or having a vehicle is not an enforceable item by the city. So that is something that we, we would not be able to know. We would not be able to control. Or any other aspect of that, that is really something that the applicant is offering. That they are proposing to do, whether they do it or not, we would never know.
Thank you, sir. Are we ready? Can I hear a motion? Um, do we need two motions or one? Two. So first a motion on E case twenty twenty four eighty nine oh one, Aguafria rezoning.
Mr. Chair, I I don't know if you've closed the public comment portion.
I thought it closed on us, but the, yes, I did.
I just quit. Thank you for your years of service. You've been doing that for a long time. We understand that. Obviously, the developer is realizing what kind of neighbor they're going to get next to. That is their choice. Understand where you're coming from, and I agree. We go both ways, and as a developer, developer, we'll find out one way or the other. Thank you for your time. Thank you for talking.
Your motion. Yes.
You guys discussing the bike.
We are. We're, we're assessing whether twenty four is enough, given a one hundred and thirty unit.
You're coming back. Just just.
Okay then. Sure.
With you, I'm thinking about it, though, for the development plan. The more the merrier on the bargain. Um, okay, I'm gonna move to approve case twenty twenty four dash eighty nine oh one. At twenty seven sixty eight Aguafria for rezoning.
Second.
Are there conditions? Nope.
Second.
Second.
It's called.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Cloud.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Reland. Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion is passed.
Of option on twenty twenty four eighty nine oh two. It's seventy sixty eight Aguafria master plan.
So in case twenty twenty four eight nine oh two two seven six eight Aguafria master plan. Um, I recommend uh, approval with the condition that we will have, that we will revisit the number of. Um, bike parking spaces when the applicant comes back. At the development. Subject to technical corrections.
Second.
He's gone.
Chair Cloud.
Yes, but it should also be subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections.
Thank you, Chair Cloud.
Thanks.
Subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections. Thank you. Chair Cloud.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yes.
Commissioner Reland. Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Commissioner McReynolds.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Yes.
Chair Smith, the motion is passed.
Very much. May we move on to, are there any staff communications? Oh, good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce to one of our new employees. Her name is Rachel Hamilton. You will introduce yourself properly.
Everyone, Rachel Hamilton, planner with the Climate and Division. Um, I moved here to Santa Fe from Maine about four weeks ago. Uh, and I have my masters in, or my masters in urban planning and community development. And was working for the state of Maine and NOAA, National Oceanographic Atmospheric Administration. Uh, in coastal zone management in Maine. Implementing the state climate action plan and updating the state climate action plan. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Been a great job to. Anything else? Yes.
Also have presence for the planning commission. It's the Santa Fe Forward um, bag. And then there's a notebook as well. Just so you know quickly, Santa Fe Forward is marching along. We published the assessment report and we're getting comments back on the assessment reports. We also are out in the community a lot. Um, this past weekend, I was at the Low Rider Festival. Rachel and another planner, Alexa, were at the movies in the park. And so we're really trying to engage with the community and get out into the community to get some feedback. So uh, we'll be providing an update on Santa Fe Forward in the near future. No.
Also, Mr. Chair. Uh. One more thing.
Need to talk.
I do have something that I need the chair and the secretary to sign. It's in the back of the room. So before you leave, if you can put your John Hancock on there, that'd be great.
Okay. Are there matters from the commission? I declare meeting adjourned.